I would hardly like for that done.
Well, Jack.
Sandy, we was trying to just...
Yes, Leo.
Vote just don't work. Say the vote just don't work. You ready, Sandy? All right, we'll call the meeting into order. Want to welcome everybody for coming tonight. Join us in the play the legions. Play the legions to the light of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion to approve agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Please chief.
Yeah, this year I was telling somebody that we don't... For Bloomfield Harry Nation Day, I don't think there's going to be as many people because they're having a ball game in St. Louis or something. The numbers might be down. As far as attendments, we're getting ready to do some... Planning for RagBri, we'll be doing some meetings with the Highway Patrol, they're out of town here next week, so... Getting ready for that. I think it'll be a busy summer. That's all I got.
All right.
Thanks.
Public comments? Consent agenda? Council minutes, airport minutes, planning and zoning, water.
Move to approve consent agenda.
All in favor?
Aye.
Booze. Discuss and give direction for construction of wastewater treatment plant and rate structure for paying for the water. Wastewater treatment plant.
Mayor, we got representatives from HR Green and from Northland Securities here tonight to talk about plant and rate structure. You have a handout in front of you regarding what is the featured issues. So the 60% completion of the plant. I'll turn it over to Haley. Introduce yourself.
Do you guys prefer that I stand?
You don't have it.
Or do you want to share?
It's pretty much whatever you're comfortable with.
Well, I'd much rather sit. Although, I'm Haley Gendrich with HR Green. Matt Wildman couldn't be here tonight, he's at an Iowa conference in Des Moines. But I've been working really closely with him on the design. And today I'm going over the 60% submittal. And I went ahead and printed two sheets for you guys that kind of summarizes the basis of our design. And really, just the main design progress that we've made to date. So, this first sheet is a process flow diagram. You can see the top left and top right corner show the two lift stations at the wastewater plant. We plan on doing improvements to the East Street lift station, just minor improvements, so replacing the trash basket, the hoist, the grading, and the guardrails. And so, from those two lift stations, wastewater is pumped to the influence splitter structure right ahead of the lagoons. We are also doing improvements to the splitter structure, so we're replacing the bar screen and the par shelf loom. And we're adding a new influence sampler. The majority of the changes actually come after that splitter structure. So the existing lagoon piping is 16-inch. And we ran, when we ran the new hydraulics, the calculations, that 16-inch is a little bit undersized. And so you're going to have wastewater backing up and force lagoon cell and overflowing. So to prevent that, we are upsizing all of the lagoon piping to 20-inch. And to save costs with that, we're doing above grade piping, so it will be on the inside slope of the lagoon berm, rather than digging down 15 feet into those lagoon berms that are already narrow and steep and have a lot of utilities running through it. So we're expecting that to save you guys about $100,000 in labor alone to do it that way. So now, the piping, the wastewater, will go from the splitter structure to the west side of the existing Cell 1. And we're actually building a berm in between, in Cell 1, to split it into two cells. So wastewater will go from that new cell in the west side, over now into the east side cell. And then it'll go into Cell 2, which is the new Cell 3. And the settling cell will be split with a baffle curtain. The level in those three lagoons will be controlled by a rectangular weir downstream of the settling cell. And from there, we're going to have 21-inch buried piping going to a primary splitter structure, which is basically a buried concrete box that has multiple channels in it. So we'll take all of the flow and split it into four even flows. And that, two of which will go to primary Sager 4A. And the remaining two will go to primary Sager 4B. And so there's two influent lines going into each of those Sagers. And each Sager has one effluent line that will come out. And we're doing 12-inch for the effluent lines. That'll go into the secondary splitter box, where it's then again diverted into four different flow paths. And two of which will go into secondary Sager 5A. And the remaining two into secondary Sager 5B. Effluent from the secondary Sagers then will be diverted to an effluent control manhole to control the level in the Sagers. And I should mention, these Sagers are what's removing the ammonia that wouldn't otherwise be removed from the lagoons. And from there, from the effluent coming out of the Sagers, we're just going to tie into the existing 16-inch DIP piping that you guys have there. And we will install T's and valves in that effluent piping so that you can easily add UV in the future if needed, without having to, you know, bypass the system or shut down the plant for weeks just to install the UV. So it should be an easy modification in five to 10 years if UV is needed. Are there any questions? I probably went through that a little fast. Are there any questions on that? On just the process flow? Okay. So the second sheet here is just an overall site plan. This is probably a lot easier to visualize when I was talking about adding berms in the existing lagoons. So we're building a berm between the Cell 1 and then in the middle of Cell 2. So now we'll have three new lagoon cells. And the remaining part of Cell 2 will have the four Sagers constructed in it. And you can see on the far east, we have our proposed blower building constructed there, along with parking in front of it, and all of that. And that blower building right now has a storage room, which will have space for the future UV bulbs. Because in the winter, we want to take those bulbs out and store them inside so they don't freeze and burst. It'll also have a space for the effluent sampler and a furnace. There's also going to be a lab, a bathroom, a shower, and then a blower, an isolated blower room for the three blowers that'll provide air to the lagoons and the Sagers. And then there will be an electrical room as well, just to have all the electrical controls in there. Are there any questions on the site layout? And what exactly is going where?
So the four Sagers, is that the rock?
Yes.
That he was talking about, building a box and building a full horse drive?
Yep, they're about nine feet deep, and they'll have a high-density polyethylene liner in it. Because that, the wood walls will eventually rot away, which is the point, so that liner will be the main base. And then we fill it with a special rock along with aeration tubing to provide oxygen to the bugs. And biofilm grows on the outside of the rocks, and that's actually what converts the ammonia to nitrate and essentially gets rid of the ammonia from the lagoons. And we're putting those on the bottom of the existing cell, rather than building everything up, because that would cost a lot more money. So we'll basically set the Sagers on the bottom of the cell and then fill in around it and grave that whole area down, rather than filling everything up, because those lagoons are 15 feet deep.
Is that right? Two new, two new berms?
Yes. So you're going to have...
You're going to split the existing in half?
Yep.
On each berm?
Yes, exactly. Two new berms.
Now, at one point, there was, I mean, these are plenty big, so I mean, there's room for growth and the future expansion to hold, to carry more flow?
Absolutely.
If we have more inflow?
Yes. And then I also have an updated opinion of cost that I'll hand out to you guys. The updated cost is 6.25 million. It has gone up a little bit since the facility plan. And that is primarily due to the blower building, adding a bathroom and a shower and all those things. And that came up when we found out that the existing lab, office building was... There were a lot of issues with it. The pipes, the water pipes are above the ceiling and they're breaking a lot. And just electrical issues in general. And we had our architect take a look at it. And he determined that it would cost just about the same to completely gut that building and redo everything as it would to just add the two spaces in the proposed blower building. So that's kind of what made us shift to putting a bathroom, a shower, and a lab in this proposed blower building, rather than trying to modify the existing lab and office building.
So the blower building has to be there regardless?
The blower building, yes, because we need a blower room, an electrical room, and a storage room.
And the shower.
So we're just adding another, you know, 40 square feet or whatever it is.
And the shower. There's two maintenance buildings, right?
There's, there's only one new building that we're proposing, but there is an existing maintenance building on site. And there's an existing lab and office building towards the entrance as well.
And that's the building that's up here at the front?
We left about seven or six percent contingency in that number. So hopefully, as we get to our 90% and 100%, the contingency can drop down to, you know, worst case, 0%. But that overall cost should stay the same, ideally. Although that will depend on how bids come out. We'd like to bid it in summer, January. And so usually when we bid that early, the bids come in better than if we wait until, say, March, early, April, or May. But once again, that's, you know, we can't really predict how those will come out.
Our goal is, is to go to bid in January. The 90% approval process will come about a month from now. With the intention of submitting this at effectively 100% to the DNR in August. We're being told four to six months for approvals. This one is not too difficult. There's one of a similar style that's going to be in the queue just in front of us, so... Going to be able to review affecting the same thing at the same time. Matt was telling us that, you know, our numbers right now include higher construction costs because bids are up right now, so that's somewhat incorporated in here. We might get lucky and see these numbers come down. But the fact of the matter is, is that right now, we're looking at probably 6.5 million, maybe a touch more inclusive of the engineering. Talk more about the strategy, about how to fund this next with Heidi. But we would request a vote right now to proceed ahead with effectively a pretty solid identified design and work that we're doing. Filling in the gaps on the detail of the plan that would lead us to developing specifications. A 30, 60, 90 approval process is difficult. And we're at 60.
What do you think, what's remaining for? Just after you got...
So our...
Looks like you got a pretty solid plan.
Yep, our civil, which is kind of what you're looking at, I would say we're more at 90%. But our electrical, mechanical, and architectural is more at like 50% right now. So we really just need to update all of those, and then our specifications are probably at 30%. So we have a lot of work for the next month in updating all the specifications.
We did the original one, we thought it could get down around 5, now we're at 6.5.
The facility plan OPC was 5.86 million is what the...
But they thought maybe there was a chance we could save some of that.
The fact of the matter is that when we start talking about rate increases, we actually got some good news there. You want to do that before you approve this, do it in combinations.
I don't know that one's going to... I mean, they both affect each other, but I don't know that one, when we do one or the others, it matters differences, I mean, I don't...
Well, you're right about that, but here's... The preliminary here is that we've been talking about a total rate increase. If you just look at it on baseline circumstance of about $25 to $35 a month for a typical residential user. You're going to hear a proposal tonight to actually have that base rate increase for three out of four of our users come in at about $18.30 increase. Significant less than once a year.
Yeah, how much is the extra for the bathroom and the shower? I mean, is that necessary?
Well, you'll want it at the site somewhere, and you have it at the existing lab, office building, but there's so many issues with that existing building that to fix those, you'll spend just as much as you're spending now to add it. The only thing is, we're adding, we have to extend the water service all the way to this new blower building, so that is about a $30,000 cost that you wouldn't have to do if you just gutted the existing building and renovated that.
Danny, is it more than just the water pipes? It's also sewer...
I never knew that we had issues with that building.
No, the sewer pipes is also an issue there too.
Although it's kind of close to Lift Station 6A, so it's, you know, you're talking $15,000 to run a service there.
The bathroom adjustments here that we're talking about, like $30,000, $40,000 total?
No, but I didn't realize we had all the issues with the old building. I've never heard it brought up before.
Yeah, I think that was brought up.
And I guess I don't know why we didn't add that to the shop when we built it that spent twice as much on as we were supposed to. Is it a possibility to add it to that building?
Well, locate to the shop?
Yeah.
The one we just built? The reason for the shower too, by the lab, you want the shower by the lab. And you had to have the wash and shower and all the last together, so... I mean, if you put it in the new building, I mean, away from the lab, you want the shower and stuff by the lab, which isn't changed. And ideally, you want the shower, it's almost like we don't have your company shop too. We need to be at a place where they can actually come in, work, and shower, and go home, and change clothes. I mean, you're working at a sewage treatment facility, you know, to... Boy, you need to be actually showering now and going home. Maybe shouldn't expect them to, you know, take those clothes home. Or take, you know, back home with them.
Wasn't that even a washer dryer then too?
No.
Well, if they leave it there, what they gonna do?
You have lockers, someone put them in the lockers.
As future mayor, I'd like to be on the uniform service plan. Something coming in the future to talk about. Price you pay for uniforms, we can save money by going to, I mean, I sent us, had five uniform monitors. But I know Scott knows about John Deere, it's the same deal. But that's a different story, that's a different thing.
Has anybody got any more questions on this or say anything?
Better than the previous proposal that we had. Never really seen.
It's better than the 18 million.
That's exactly right.
Dan? Does, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Does the big pipe that flows around the edge, I mean, it'll never freeze, right?
No, because it'll be in warm wastewater. So the wastewater is what, 60 degrees usually?
It's inside the berm. And there'll be some insulation at too, right?
Nope, it'll just be...
It flows all the time.
Not too close to.
It's constant flow.
Yeah, it'll be 12 feet deep in wastewater.
Especially in Cell 1, that's the hottest area that comes in and goes.
You got any questions? Jack, you got any questions?
It's the way I designed it.
It's the way you designed it. Well, that's the way I drew it up earlier too.
Man, that's amazing, because that's the way I did it.
Glad we're all on the same page. I forgot to dash a couple of my lines. All right, motion to approve the 60%.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Booze. Thank you.
I'll stick around.
Go ahead, Heidi, you're next.
Everyone, Heidi Cool with Northland, you probably remember me from a couple months ago back here again to talk about this new sewer system and how the city will pay back the loan. So you got the 60% number, that's about 6.2, doesn't include engineering expenses, so I think that's about it, 6.8. Good news is that, looking at your sewer fund, it's in a healthy condition. Can use some of that to spend it down. So we'll look at a scenario today of 6.5 million as a loan. So there's a lot of these DNR mandates and how we're going to finance them. Like the last time you went to the bond market and got a general obligation bond, when you have a sewer project, start looking at funding the project with sewer revenues. Iowa Finance Authority has a program through SRF that allows a 2% loan for 20 years to pay back these types of projects. It's the most cost-efficient way to pay for these types of projects. If you would go out to the bond market and get a sewer revenue bond, you're going to be paying maybe even close to twice the rate. And we'll get into a little bit, there's a certain coverage ratio you have to have in your sewer fund. It's a larger coverage ratio that you'd have to have. And so this SRF program seems to be the most cost-efficient. There's also USDA program out there, that's a 40-year loan. Typically, it's best to look at something that's closer to that 20-year range, because you're putting in a new infrastructure. You wouldn't want to have a loan outstanding and still be paying on it, and that infrastructure is, you know, no longer works for, you know, for the city. So today we'll be looking at that SRF program with a 2% rate for 20 years. Few things that we'll take a look at is, what I've taken a look at is just the history of the sewer fund and how it can pay for it. Through the Iowa Finance Authority, there's a grant provided to pay for someone like me to come in and analyze the rates to make sure that the rates that the city puts into place will pay for the loan. That grant's fully paid for, so any cost for my services will be paid for through that grant. So if you see here on the front page here, this is a summary of what the rate increase would look like. We've got the $6.5 million project. Currently, your minimum bill includes 3,000 gallons worth of flow. Your usage rate is $6.10. And you've got a base rate of $26.58. Right now, if you go down in that box, if you use 3,000 gallons, your bill for your sewer is $26.58. For each additional 1,000 gallons, it adds $6.10. So, you know, you'll see those user impacts for if you use 3,000, 5,000, 10,000, 20,000. To the right of that is different ways that you can increase your rates to pay for this new project. As Gary said before, he said, initial thoughts were looking at $25 to $35 base increase. Because of how well this sewer fund is doing. Looking at, if you wanted to do just a flat increase on everybody, not looking at how much anybody uses, you'd be looking at a flat $24 increase. You'd be going from, you use 3,000 gallons or less, you'd be going from $26.58 to $50.58. When you put an increase down on the base, what are the impacts? Those who don't use that that much are going to have a higher dollar impact. Those who use more of the flow, they're just going to have just just that base increase, you know, that base increase. So I've given a couple scenarios for you to take. Look at, I have a 50-50 increase, which shows an $18 increase on that base. But your usage rate goes from 6.10 to 10.32. So what you see here is that $3,000 user...
3,000 gallons?
3,000, yeah, 3, sorry about that. 3,000 gallon user goes to 44.97 instead of that 50.98. But as you start seeing those users that use more, their bills start to go up, go up higher. So it's kind of, I kind of wanted to show you these scenarios of what it would look like for different people throughout the community. Get a little bit of your feedback and talk through...
Just to give you context, we have 1,200 and 161, I think it is, sewer users. 920 of the 1261 are only paying the base rate. Three out of four. So when we talk about a rate increase here that is only on the base, you'll see that the majority of the users here will be paying the whole rate as would be a high-flow user. So the look here is that if you look at all flow, then the base user would not have any increase, the 920. And of course, the 25% that is not just a base user but above would be paying all of it. Which, you can see the numbers get pretty high. But if you look at a 50-50 blend where 50% would be borne by the base user... But if you look at a 50.50 blend where 50% would be borne by the base user and 50% would be borne by high users, you can see that there's probably a reasonable increase across the board. Because if you, like, again, if it were all base, somebody would be, a 20,000 gallon user, they'd be paying 154 a month. It'd go up to 220 on a 50.50 basis. But if you look at it all flow, it'd be 431. So, I think you're looking at this in the context of spreading this cost, not completely on the base, you're on the high-end users, but spreading it equally amongst them. That's where we come up with this $18.39 increase for three out of four people in the city, three out of four users in the city.
One of the things to think about, why would a city put it all on the base? Or why would they put more of it on the flow? Base is, it's the easy, you know how many number of meters you have? That revenue is very, very consistent. Who does it impact more? It impacts those who are on a fixed income more than those who are using the system. City would use more on the flow. When you have to have these types of upgrades, it's due to having higher usage. So, those who are using the system more are paying for that system more. Slight risk with that is if you have a high-end user going off business or something like that, your revenues can go up, can get a little bit out of whack. You put a little bit more of a cushion in those rates to make sure that you can still make those payments.
One other thing to understand here is 2%. Explain that.
So, these rate increases have a few assumptions I'll kind of go through. Looking at your number, the number of meters, the number of gallons that are filled after construction, then it's expected that there'll be about a $25,000 operating expense increase that's been put into the analysis. In that number four, it says, assume utility rates will increase to match inflation operations. The next page I'll go through shows an analysis that has a 2% increase annually after this rate increase goes in place. What that does, it is, it has an annual rate increase that keeps up with costs that are going up each year. This analysis, if I take that 2% off, that those rate increases will not sustain your payment, sustain those payments. So, it is imperative that those 2% annual increases are in place. What most cities do is they'll put an ordinance in place that says, put 2% increase unless the city council decides. So, you're not every year coming back having to vote yes for a rate increase. It's just if, if something would change in the fund where it would no longer be necessary, the council could then vote and say, we'll forego our 2% this year.
Is law allows this as 2% or does it allow it as CIP?
It could, whatever the city council votes on is what it can be. Some will do a CIP, which that can fluctuate from year to year. What I've put on here is a 2% on both that rate and that flow. I'll go ahead and go to this second page here. This is a rate increase based on the base. So, you'll see a lot of numbers on this page. What it is here is we have, on the top, we have the assumptions of your water and sales growth. The city's water and sales growth has been pretty stagnant, so we're keeping those projections at zero. Operating expenses, putting a 3% increase on your operating expenses each year. That's pretty close to what she's been doing in history. Along the top, you'll see the potential rate increases. What I have in here today is taking that total rate increase that you're seeing on that front page and putting it into two increases. I have a, in talking with Gary, we have 75% of that increase upfront and then 25% of that year later. I have it going in right in as of this year, this upcoming month. You can, I would suggest putting in some type of increase sooner rather than later. Why, why do you do that? Because you know that this expense is coming up. You have taken into account some engineering expenses. The sooner that a rate increase is put into place, the sooner you're up in those cash balances where you can lower your loan expenses. You know, at the end of the day, the more cash you have on hand in this fund, you can lower your loan amount. And it also gives you just, just the time and planning. If you're making that rate increase right at that last minute, having to bump up cash balances, it can end up being a higher rate increase. The reason that we have it broken up in two is there's still some contingencies out there so we can make adjustments with those, with that second increase.
What that would mean is that if we were to do, if we were to settle on the 50.50 basis and recognize at this point in time, we would be looking at $18.10 for the typical resident as far as a rate increase is concerned, that would come in at $13.08 that ostensibly could have implemented this summer. And then, when this project's completed, probably somewhere between, I'd say 18, probably around 18 months from now, is at that time when you start to consider the final rate increase that would match then exactly where you're at from the standpoint of borrowing and for that matter, whatever the costs are that could fluctuate either up or down. But we're saying that 75% of this is certainly enough, that's known right now.
It's the second sheet that's got most about the same. What's it?
So, you'll see there's three scenarios behind here. Up in this upper right-hand corner, you'll see current cash flow base, 6.5. So, the only difference on these is how I'm putting that rate increase. This is all on the base, first one's all on the base.
Second one's flow.
Second one's flow.
And third one's 50.
Third one's 50.50. So, what we've been looking at is this page number four, that 50.50 increase. You'll see I have an increase on 7.1 of 19 of 13.82 for your base.
You can go somewhere in between, you'll have to land on the 50.50, 60.40.
You're absolutely right. There's no, there's no magic here. What I've put in is, if you look at the top, I've put a 52% increase on the base, a 52% increase on your current flow. So, it's not, it's not changing how your revenues, you're about it. 80% of your revenues come from that base, 20% of them come from a flow. So, it's not changing that aspect. If you want to put a little, you know, go more to a 70.30, it's something we can absolutely look into. But just to get some numbers in front of you to show you what, what 100% base would look like, 100% flow, it's something right in the middle there.
Next one, I was kind of look at the dollar amount and try to land in between the 26.58 and 50.50.
This also takes into account what is called a loan coverage. When you have a loan with SRF, they require that you have 110% of the payment after your operating expenditures. Taking all your revenues, minus your operating expenditures, you have to have 100% of that loan payment. So, that 2020 loan payment for 6.5 million is about 396,000. So, you'll have to have 1.1 times that. So, you'll have to have that amount in hand. What that does do for you is it'll, that other 10% allows for your cash balances to have money set aside for capital outlays expenditures. You'll see in the bottom here, I have 45,000 a year. If you look at your history, you've been spending just about that in your capital expenditures annually.
When's the first payment going to be due?
If you're looking at schedule, probably that first payment would be due in December of 2020.
How much is it?
That would be just the interest payments.
Can we do monthly payments?
With the SRF, it's just like a, just like a bond, you'll have your interest due in December and you'll have your principal and interest due in June.
So, we can't do monthly payments? So, what's the total payment?
The total annual payment is 396.
So, if we raise rates, if we do the 50.50, and we raise rates July 1, what's that getting? And what's the total revenue from that rate increase?
So, you're looking at the.
You're looking at the 75%.
Looking at that 75% of it. So, we go from 26.58 to 40.40 would be the base.
I'm talking the base, the bottom line, what's, how much more revenue are we going to get with the 75% increase?
Sure. So, if you looked, are you on page four? Right up at the top right corner. So, if you do that 50.50 increase, we're looking at, you're going to have, based on your estimated revenues and expenditures, if you put that increase in right away, you're going to have $276,000 this year added to your cash balance. We're on the page four right here.
We don't have a page number.
So, you don't have the page number on here. 450, 50.50. Yep. So, you're looking at 2020. Go ahead and put just rate increase. See up here on the top, you'll see the rates. Down there, you'll see this blue line, you'll see operating revenues, operating expenditures for 2020. That puts that 75% increase in. Then you go ahead and go all the way down to the bottom, you're going to have estimate 45,000 in capital outlays. Already know that there's going to be a $75,000 transfer for a $276,000 increase to the cash flow down here. So, you're looking at going from 373 to 650. This, I know the, there's, this, my version starting here has 75,000 in here, but everything's going to be the same except for that number will go down by 75,000.
We have the same sheet.
Yeah. I apologize.
The 75,000 is added in the end because that is reflected, the 75,000 we're transferring in this upcoming fiscal year to the Foxconn. That's the only difference on the bottom line.
I apologize for that.
So, all that revenue will be, we'll have a full year and a half before we have any payments.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah, you're looking at starting the payments in fiscal 2021.
So, we have a year and a half of no payments with the 75% for one year and then we're 100% for half a year before we have any payments.
Side of that eight, side of that first.
This is the end of the summer. So, we actually do have a full year and a half before we make a payment, or a year and five months. So, we're going to gain about 400, 450,000 in increased revenue in that year and a half. So, if we have that, why do we need 6,000? Why can't we do the $6 million and just use that money to pay? And if we could very well do that.
We very well could. Just at this point, you know, we still have some outstanding, you know, outstanding.
In the end, we would change that.
The 6.254 that you have is the 100%. That's the total without the engineering.
Yes.
But I mean, that's, yeah.
The engineering puts it up to over 20.
And we have some fund allowance now. But we also still have to keep that coverage.
So, you can spend down that cash beforehand, but you've got to have rates in place to make that coverage payment at that 110.
Have to have 110%.
Each year, you have to have rate.
You've got to have just over 400,000, 110%. And when we do the budgeting for this, you know, we'll have to put walls around that money as far as the coverage until we come to year 19 of the loan and we could then assumingly use that last year to pay off the last payment. But the point being is that we are required to hold that 110%. Again, if we were doing more traditional revenue bonds, it'd be a lot more coverage.
You look at coverage of 135% instead of 110. So, with the loan, they just have to take, they're taking on some of that first so they have to ensure that those rates will pay for the loan payment. Except that, after that loan payment, it does pay for those capital expenditures that you're already taking to the job. So. And it's a lot of numbers, a lot of numbers in front of you tonight. I'll leave some business cards here if you have any questions, concerns. Please feel free to reach out to me. I know that, first time seeing this report and it's funding the 6, 6 and a half million dollars or whatever it ends up to be around 600. Whatever way we fund it, it's not going to be easy. Tonight, I wanted to kind of get some of your feedback to see where the council feels, what types of increases they feel makes sense.
When's construction complete?
18 months from probably spring 2020.
So, we're looking at July 2021?
Yep.
So, the December 2020 payment won't be a full payment? You know, because we won't have all the funds? Because we, it's just like we just draw as we use it or we just pay on what we use?
Paying what we use. It'll be a draw situation.
So, we don't, if we only use 4.5 million by that date, we only pay that on that amount, we don't pay on.
We'll pay, we'll have to pay.
So, the first full interest payment won't be till December 2021?
Right. We'll have to pay interest on the portions that we're drawing.
Right. Yeah, you'll have to pay principal and all that first year too. But I'm just saying, our first full payment, the 396, won't happen till December 2021.
We've built in aggressive assumptions here.
Well, I'm just.
Yeah, no, I, you're absolutely right.
I was trying to see if there's some way we can increase it. I'm not, I mean, we need the full increase, but is there some way we can increase it slower so that we're not have such a big hit at one time? Can you do a 33, 33, 33?
Well, that's what I was thinking is, instead of going for all base or all flow, if we split the dollar amount, there'd be $24 difference between the 26.58 and 50.58. If we use, if we went with the $12, whatever percent, that works out 60.40 or.
Sure. So, right now, we're splitting up the pay, the increase, whether it's on base, flow, or 50.50, we're looking at 75% of that. Look at something closer to 50.50, you know? So, that $18 increase is a $9 increase and then, and then again, we'll do the $9 increase to total that $18 increase.
The, there is a 50.50 means, I think you understand, 50.50 means that we're spreading the cost based upon what the base rate is and the flow rate is and about, you know, you want to do.
I'm just thinking about all the people, like you said, are on fixed income, they're on the low end of the usage, getting a little less of the bump.
And then only a $12 a month instead of a 18. I understand that. My opinion on that is, is it still costs us so much for everybody to have water. My opinion on that is, is it still costs us so much for everybody to have water service and sewer service regardless, whether you use 3,000 gallon or 50,000 gallon. And that's why I like the 50/50 part to where everybody's paying for their share up to a certain point of having the luxury. And then if I use 40,000 gallon, okay, so it costs me 300 bucks to do it. But it's still costing the person that uses 3,000 because they actually, they actually cost us money by not using water more than the guy that uses more because you still have to give them, you still have to make it available to them and repairs and all that. I mean, that may be a weird way to look at it, but I mean, there's still so much cost regardless.
And I think that that's the reason why we look at it from a 50/50. Not that we're married to it, but that's why you look at it from a 50/50 standpoint. If Darren, you're talking about instead of an $18 increase and you look at some sort of blend and you say this would be a $12 increase. And in fact, at 50/50 starts to go maybe 7030 on the flow side.
40, whatever. Yeah, I don't know.
So I may be just speculating, but what that means then is, is that there's going to be a lot more of the heavy users paying for this. That's not to say that's wrong. It's just that that's the impact. And in fact, if you drop the 18 down to 12.
Well, this is, this is, it's based on water usage, but it's actually the sewer use.
But it, the only way this is ever done.
Right. But I'm just saying, because what happens? Users are actually the ones costing the more.
And I think that that's, that's the point here is, is what is the right blend? And I think that that's what you're pointing out. And if, for instance, one of the things this might point out right now is just look at what we have as our structure right now. You can see that, like I say, three out of four people right now are paying the base rate and that's it. The high users are the, have the 25%. Is that the right ratio? Should that ratio be 6040 as opposed to 2575? Should that rate be 8020? If you make that, that ratio 8020, then in fact, that'll affect all these numbers.
That's what I brought up.
Right.
I mean, I mean, what caused that? I mean, is it long or so, they so, I mean, what is it that? I mean, as far as what the SADAR system does.
Oh, what causes the ammonia?
Yeah, what causes the ammonia?
It's in the earth and then also the runoff from farm fields. That's a lot of it from inflow into everything because we use ammonia as fertilizer. So that's also a lot of it.
So a lot of your high users aren't flushing toilets. But they give a quick, but I mean, they, you know, washing something, you know? I mean, I'm just saying it's the ammonia causing a lot of it is coming from your 3,000 gallon users the same as it is your 30,000 gallon user. Probably in the, and that's why.
Which is why it's heavily weighted on that side of the point to begin. 75% of it's base. I mean, we didn't change that ratio when we started putting together these. We're saying in this context, that that 7525 is acceptable. If you want to start changing that, then that changes everything also. Maybe that's the first question you have to ask.
So if we change the increase instead of 7525 to 5050, does that hurt the end result?
You're going to have, you're going to have less, you're going to have less cash this year where you don't have a payment to bump, to bump up, you know, to lower borrowing costs.
But if we can't guarantee that doing it this way is going to bump us and now say drop us down to 6 million?
Well, that's what.
Money you collect now is going to save the interest.
Depending, no matter what the bits come back at.
That's where you, that's where you make the decision unless 25%. It could be 22%, it could be, you know, 28%.
I'm just thinking less of a hit. I mean, 75% has a pretty good jump.
75% is what it is then.
I'm just saying if we did the first jump at 50 and then the second jump, if we, maybe it's only 45. So that you don't have, you're going to double. I mean, so you don't have such a big increase in people's bills. You go 75%, I mean, that's almost double.
Their bills.
It's 13 bucks. Just gives it some time to get used to.
But do you want to do like a, instead of a two-step, a three-step?
I'm fine with a two-step, I think, but can we make the first step smaller?
You still got to get that coverage cost. Still got to have, you still have to build up over 400,000 for the coverage payment. And for the first year plus, was it first year or more than the first year?
For the 277,000.
That's a year?
That's, that's a year.
Okay. So 277 for the first year. And then somewhere in that realm, you got to come up with another 140,000 with a rate increase over a six-month, a 10-month period of time. And that's just for coverage. That doesn't have anything to do with if this cost comes in higher. If this cost comes in lower, then you can lower that number too. But your, your, our fund balance is in, I mean, that we have now is what? About 500,000. Okay, so we've, you've got that covered. We do. But then if we didn't do anything on the coverage, then we have effectively no fund balance.
I understand that. What I'm saying is if we do the 270 whatever and add another 100 or 370, so we're only using 30,000 of the fund balance for coverage. You'd be using 100,000.
I mean, I, you know, your, your point, Dan, is, is valid. I think that if you want to slow down the rate and we're looking at this, first of all, to build, one of the things that is obviously build the coverage. So let's just say that instead of 277,000, we mind up and say, let's, let's do the first rate increase that would get us 200,000. And we still need to come up with another, almost double that amount. So your point might be is that, okay, let's do 200,000. Take 100,000 out of the fund balance, get us to 300,000. That would slow the increase. You're still going to have to do the full 18.
I understand that. But then if you don't want the full increase until we get to the point of having the full payment.
Right, right. So what I'm saying is, is that if, if, if we do a rate increase that gets you like 200,000 instead of 277 and take 100,000 out of the fund balance and then do that second rate increase, we hired, but then it's compared to the lower one, you may very well be able to look at it that way and say, okay, we're going to spend down our fund balance 100,000. Obviously, this, this program was in the long term not to spend down the fund balance. The other thing too is, is that when we look at this and you can see that over time, the fund balance builds, but then so does cost. The real question is, is do you want to supplement some of the increases that you have? The 2% increase, you want to supplement that with some of the fund balance to pay the debt? You could think about that in future depending on where you get out of the fund balance. I would caution only in this regard is, is that if you start using fund balance to pay that operating cost, you can't do it every year. There might be years you do it, there might be years you don't. And then all, and realize that the other equipment or fixes that we make out into the community for the sewage treatment system, which we will be doing, will have to come from either a second borrowing or the accumulation and fund balance. I mean, I don't think that this project is the only project that we're going to be doing as far as sanitary sewage treatment. The rest of it will be probably more centered on the collection system. I'm what you want to hit that, that fund balance. Or you could do it in the front end just to save, save an impact on, on the rate increase issue.
If you build it, if you did a three-step, if you hit it on the first step, you could always build it back with the third.
Yeah, you could do that, yeah. Absolutely.
Me, I'm just trying to keep from hitting the public so hard at one time. Okay. Because I mean, this isn't the only project. But we got electrical infrastructure that needs work. I mean, we've got other things that's going to need worked up to them. And all that is rate increase. And it's just.
We, but obviously with electric, we got a whole different story as far as fund balance is concerned.
But I mean, we got to think about that when we start raising rates on everything else. It's, can we raise this? We got to raise this. We got to raise that. We raised taxes in the streets. I mean, you know, and that's all stuff that has to be done and everybody's aware of it. But the less we can impact them at one time so that they can get used to it.
So if, if, if we're generally in agreement about the total number of 1839, the question then is, is Darren is saying, well, maybe $12. Maybe not in the same context, but what do you want to see for a first increase that would come this summer?
Right. You can see we got to get. 1839 and the 1032 is, that's final, that's 100%.
Yeah, that's 100%. You know, so in looking at the 50/50, if you did 75% of it upfront, that's 1382. But, but if we wanted to do half of that upfront, half of that 1839, you could do a 920 and.
So if we did a.
A $1.50 on your.
So if we did an $11 on the base rate and left the 1032 the same?
I'll put the, put the full 317 on the, going from 610 to 1082 on the.
So you're just talking about putting up the base and that's true of the high users?
No, we're going to leave. We'll put, I'm just, so instead of 1839, make that 11 or 12, whatever. But leave the, because you're adding what? $3 or $4.22 to the usage rate? And just leave that in place for now. And then that, and then your high users are paying the higher usage rates. That off the deck. And it won't affect your low user rates. It won't affect your, the only impact you'll have on the 920 is the $12.
Well, you're, you're talking about doing 11 or $12.
Do the $12 on the base, but then go ahead and raise the usage rate, the full amount now.
Okay. So the only difference in that is instead of 13, what is it?
1382 going down.
Is there much difference between 11 or 12 bucks and 1382?
$1.83.
I mean, what, what's impact?
Yeah, that's the difference.
Yeah. I mean, obviously the question is, is that enough of an impact?
Make it 10 bucks. I don't, I was just thinking if the high users, if you did the 50/50 and you raised the usage rate now 100% and left the base rate, that would pick up if you left, if you made it, what, 10 bucks? Then your high users would be paying more up.
That's what I was, that's what I was getting at earlier is shifting more to the high usage where your, your base is just, it's just maybe $12.
But then what you're saying is not 50/50, but it's like 64.
But I would, I mean, and then the second step, I would put it all, I'd put it all on the base. I like your 1839 and the 1032. For the 100%, but I just would like it split up, the base part of it split up. Because the base rate is what affects everybody. If you raise the high usage now, that affects the high users. So they're paying more upfront for the more usage. And then the second step, take it to the.
Let's, let's.
If you do a three-step, do.
Let, let's, let's talk about numbers here. 7525, we know what that means. It's 1382. Instead of 7525, if you did 6535, that's 1195. Is that enough of a difference? It's $2, it could be $2.
Might be somebody on fixed income.
I, yeah.
Are you talking about whether you raise it now or what you're 70, 65 now and 35 later?
Yeah.
I, I was just.
I, the 75 now didn't bother me. I was just trying to shift more to the usage.
I understand. And that's different than what the mayor said.
So you're wanting, not 50/50. So if you want the 1839 to be 12 or 14 and the 1032 to be 1432?
That's what I'm understanding.
So the usage is higher?
Yeah, so you're.
I don't like that.
I just thought, yeah. But I mean, the 60/40, what Darren's saying is, is that the high-end users would be paying more under 60/40.
But if you raise the usage number 100% now and you leave and take them back to base of a little bit more, them 920 people are just going to see a small increase.
Well, understand that you got a quarter of the users that are in this high category. How many of them are just 5,000? 10 or 20 is another story. But the fact is.
I'm in the point.
Okay. But I, I mean, the, the, the point is, is that if you look at it from Darren's perspective, he's, he's challenging the base idea of 50/50. That could, that would have an across-the-board impact at the backend. It wouldn't be 1839. It would be something less 1839. I don't know what the number is. It might be, you know, 17 bucks, 15 bucks, somewhere in there. If you put more on the high end users.
I'm just going off with the base. Because what she said is causing the ammonia.
Right.
The people only using 3,000 gallon.
It's hard to say what's.
2,500 gallon that's causing.
Biggest user is probably the school system.
One of them.
A lot of toilets getting flushed there.
Yeah, but it's only nine pumps out of the year.
You're looking at schools, nursing homes, hospitals.
Those are my thoughts.
Those would be your high, those, your high-end users.
But I want, my other point on the base part of it is, is it costs so much to give everybody, for everybody to have water and sewer. And I think the base rate needs to be higher anyhow to help cover this or the normal cost of what it costs us to do business. That's my opinion.
Yeah. I mean, the first question is, is the current spread.
If you change the eight, I mean, you can't do it just by moving dollars to usage. So if you made the base, say we made the base, the final base number at 16, a $16 addition. What's that do to the usage number?
Maybe you're, okay.
Does that, you follow me?
I do.
That takes a little more off of the small user and adds a little more to the big user. But it still gains us to help with our infrastructure. I mean, to help with our everyday costs too.
Well, this rate increase will not address our everyday cost. This is only about the sewage treatment.
Earl Fox.
You, you, you just kind of kind of.
I kind of like that idea of splitting them into three.
The three increases?
Three increases, you know, if we can figure that out. And then, um, your, your usage costs, go with that as it's proposed. So your high ends are making up starting now. And if we can take that total number and divide it into thirds, and you do one in Ju- Ju- July, you do, in the, when you look at the full time span, break it into three slots, and you do a third now, the third when the time comes, and the third at the end, are we coming out where we need to be? Or how does it have to be adjusted? And that's what she needs to do.
It sounds like we gotta do it in the nine months period.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well, let's, let's, let's think about this for a second. You, you need to have.
At least about eighteen months when we start.
You need to have a, you need to have a good chunk of money upfront to at least get some of that coverage. Maybe this is a, a forty thirty thirty deal, a, a, a fifty twenty, or fif- fifty thirty twenty. I don't think you want to go any less than, than twenty percent on the back one because you, you're obviously gonna have to match that with what's going on.
So that, yeah, fifty thirty twenty might be reasonable.
From her perspective, I think the longer you wait, the more it's gonna cost you in the interest of the future.
That's right.
It is true.
And what that does, what that does is it puts more pressure on, on what you want out of your fund.
So that affects our last increase.
Yeah, that last increase.
Twenty percent or twenty-three.
The less you collect upfront could cost you more later.
So by July, July one of twenty twenty, to make that payment for ju, for fiscal twenty twenty-one, you're gonna wanna have your full, you're gonna wanna have your full increase in place. What you have before helps you, helps you, helps you upfront.
So we need our full rate increase by July one of twenty twenty.
So you have a full year, um, to get those funds in place to make that coverage.
So we don't have enough time to do that.
You could do si, you know, six.
Sixty-five, sixty-five thirty-five.
Yeah.
Never six, never six times, um.
I know.
So we can do a fifty fifty, we can do a sixty forty, sixty now, forty next.
But that forty might, cause forty is the variable one.
Forty could be thirty-five or it could be forty-five.
Yeah.
But the bigger the first number is, the better chance we have that last number be a thirty-five than we have it being more than that.
That's true.
I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
An extra hundred thousand upfront's gonna save us way more than that.
Yeah.
Twenty years.
Kind of like buying the insurance that pre-bleeding expenses.
May I ask a question? The hundred thousand upfront is only dealing with the impact of the rate increase in the short term.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
So we, we use about, we have nine hundred users or so that are using roughly three thousand gallons, right?
Nine hundred twenty at the moment.
So, three million, roughly three million gallons a month. And we use somewhere around a hundred or three hundred thousand gallons a day, which is nine million gallons a month. So sixty percent, sixty to sixty-five percent of our usage is those two hundred users that are not the minimum rate payers, right? So it seems to me if you go with what he was sugge, what the mayor's suggesting about just putting in place the whole flow rate, don't have a much bigger impact than whatever you do with that base rate, right?
On those, on those twen, that.
In terms of collecting the upfront.
Cause right now, if I use twenty thousand gallons, I pay a hundred and thirty dollars a month. At the new rate, if I use that same twenty thousand gallon, I'm paying another ninety dollars a month for that water. That's a bigger impact raising that now on me.
Right.
Than it is raising the base rate.
It would be interesting to see what that number comes out to be, what you're gonna get.
I'm just using myself for example. I don't. I know.
So currently the systems, they give a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars just on that, uh, on, on the, on the, uh, rate. Mainly, so it's just, uh.
Darren, you're not getting much value.
Any increase with that is just a percentage on top, percentage on top of that.
The, the big users, most of them pass, pass expenses.
Small users.
Except for the schools.
The schools don't.
Well, yeah.
Take two in tax money.
Well, I've got a school that does.
I said the most.
One of the good things is, is that there is, there is some time. Um, you know, we're not looking at this at the, at, um, we're not looking at this at the last minute and I'm saying, you know, we gotta put forty dollars on today, uh.
Well, let, let's ask that question. Do you want to get it started somehow? And then come back and, and, and start dealing with this in a, in a broader context?
I'm all for the, the more, the sooner you do it, the less it's gonna hurt in the long run.
You're right. I would, I'd be inter, I know you probably can't. It'd be interesting to see if you did a base rate of sixteen dollars at the hundred, at the total hundred percent end, what that changes that usage number to. But I would be, I guess I would entertain an idea of tonight of doing. If you want to do three steps, do we do ten bucks on the base and the ten thirty-two on the usage? Do we do that tonight to get it going through July and then we work the rest of the fifty percent out later? I'm just throwing ideas out. I mean, July one's gonna be here pretty quick.
Pretty quick. The intent would be is, is that we bring back the ordinance at the next council meeting. It's just a matter of how much you want to start out with.
And that's splitting, I mean, that's, that's putting more on the, that's putting more on the big users than the base user right now. I think that's gonna be.
I, I want to go back to, I want to go back to something that, that Haley said. This is that this project couldn't be done in the end of twenty twenty-one or midway twenty twenty-one.
Mid twenty-one, twenty-one.
Yeah, probably.
In the summer.
Yeah.
Summer of twenty-one.
Yeah.
So, so that means is that we have two years, but we got about a, a year and a half before we nail it down, or do we have two years? If this project's gonna be done in line, two years from now. I mean, do we have an extra six months here?
I, what's that, if, once we start construction, we'll be getting that loan, you know, be getting that loan and about the time we'll be starting construction, so. Um.
I mean, we'll be paying the interest on it. We know that. When we get the SRF loan, do we have to, have to have a fixed number or can that number adjust as we go through the construction process?
Once you start that construction process, that's, that's gonna be where you, where you get that loan.
What you get for that loan. So, so the point being is, is let's say there's a cost overrun. Instead of a six and a half million dollar project, this is a seven million dollar project, we have to pick up that cost outside the SRF. So we don't want to commit to the SRF until as late as possible. So, so this, when we commit to the SRF, do we have to commit right at the time the construction starts?
It's usually pretty close. Um, let me get, let me get back to you on exactly.
Cause, cause the reason I'm asking that is, is that if we're collecting this money upfront, we could at least do some drawdown internally to pay some of that drawdown interest cost. And that's what it's all about. This is, is that we're not gonna pay interest, we're only, we're gonna pay some interest costs really for a two-year period of time, you, or actually a year and a half period of time, maybe. When we started out, that first interest cost is not gonna be the standard interest cost. It's gonna be a big one based upon how much we've drawn down over that period of time, but we don't have to pay for it until first payment.
If you put in. So i- i- if I did my numbers right, the usage cost per month is gonna generate from the increases about three hundred thousand dollars in revenue. And the non, and the base is gonna generate out a hundred and fifty, roughly, right? A little less. So if you increase all of your, if you put in place all of your usage increase right now and redi, and reduce your, what the mayor was suggesting, reduce your base cost by twenty-five percent, you're giving a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of additional annual usage in, or a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of annual usage increase and losing fifty thousand, seventy-five thousand on the base. You're actually coming down a hundred and fifty thousand dollars ahead of money in the bank if you did it that way. Is that my only?
I have to double check, but that, that, your logic sounds good.
So if you have less impact on our, on our fixed income users, but still start collecting more money upfront, it might be a really good, that, I mean, at least if we're looking at, right? That's just the, that's just. When you, when your rates are seeing, when you, the impact that you're putting down, if all the rates are falling, it should be a hundred and forty.
That's thirty-four hundred, fifty thousand dollar annual increase.
And two-thirds of that.
We gotta have four hundred and forty thousand. That's what we take out the loan. We gotta have the hundred and ten percent when we initiate the loan.
So you look at, you look at it, uh, in your fiscal year. So you'll take your revenues and your expenditures from that fiscal year, um, after, after all your res, revenues from June one, uh, or, sorry, from July one to June thirtieth, any fiscal year, you look at those revenues minus those expenditures.
In the short term, Mayor, we could, we could cover that just with what we got in reserve. But we don't want to do that long-term, I guess.
Right.
Yeah, cause I, I mean, I would rather have the reserve if we need, if we could use part of it to help pay down to get it, you know, to save us some interest in the long run versus using it to cover the loan, cause that's not.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it?
I understand.
Makes more sense if you do that.
If you look at the six million versus the six and a half million, cause that's probably about half a million what we could do. What was the six million?
It's just about two.
Two bucks, two and a quarter.
So we were looking at, um, forty, you know, we did a fifty fifty total, it was four ninety-seven. This total increase, six million is forty-three sixty-eight, so we're looking at.
A dollar thirty.
Yeah.
So what's the payment on six million annually versus the six and a half?
Uh, three sixty-six.
So it's thirty thousand a year. And it, and it. So it'd take the twenty years to get your six hundred thousand back?
That would be, no. What it is, is, well, in the context of, of the payers, that would be, now, I guess.
You want to have a cash reserve close to the amount of your annual expenditures. The reason being is, it's, it's just like, uh, if you go ahead and get a, a bigger house or a bigger car, you need to have more in reserves for those types of reasons. Um, these reading, rate increases also show a growth in those cash reserves to pay for, um, equipment and, and other expenditures so that, so that when you have this loan in place, you're not having to go out and buy, uh, go out for loans for smaller.
Our cash reserve is only set a hundred percent right now. So you really don't want to mess with that out of long term.
What I'm hearing is that, I, I think, I think the council's thinking that we need to do something, um, soon. Like the idea of closer to a fifty fifty, maybe a sixty forty, uh, with more on the flow. And then.
More on the base, less on the user. We got one guy that's.
More on the.
More on the base and less on the user.
To me, that's the guarantee money.
Sure, absolutely.
Everybody uses it.
Well, it are, right?
It are. Everybody's sort of the same ones we got. So everybody, in my opinion, should carry the weight.
So that would mean that to do that, if you wanted to have nothing on the flow, it's, it's a twenty-four dollar increase.
No, I'm not saying, no, I'm just saying heavier than humph, that's not a special thing.
That's what I'm saying too.
So those nine, those.
So your sixty forty is more on the base and less on the flow?
I mean, that's what Darren's got to know.
More on base.
What?
No, the mayor was the other way. Or, I'm sorry, forty on base, sixty on flow.
And you're sixty on base and forty on flow.
No, I, I, I'm just reflecting, Darren says, that's opposite of what Scott's saying.
If we didn't have such a flow, we wouldn't need that.
Right, what's that?
If we didn't have such a flow, we wouldn't have to spend six million dollars to upgrade.
No, if we didn't have the flow, we wouldn't be sitting here having to do it either.
I can run a couple of scenarios. I can do sixty forty, forty sixty, taking, take away those numbers. Where does everybody feel on the?
Can I suggest that, that we did twelve bucks right now? Regardless of the ratios you were at, at future meetings, but we just did twelve bucks right now.
I, I think we need to get something started.
What if we do forty bucks on the base? Tonight, make the base forty and add two ten to the usage.
But you're, you're talking about raising it from twenty-six up to forty.
Tonight, yep, and then add two ten to the.
Thirteen each. Which, which?
I know, we're.
Seventy-five, seventy-five.
I don't want to hear you.
The same number. But I'm just.
It's the same number.
Seventy-five percent of fifty fifty.
But it's only twenty, it's only fifty percent on the usage. It's not seventy-five. Take the usage, instead of six ten, make it eight one. And then when we come to the end, or we, we'll adjust it. Usage and the rest of the base, that's what we. We have to take the motion to approve it to make the ordinance.
You gotta give us directions to put it together.
You okay with that, Earl?
When you say six ten.
I mean, I know it's, but we don't have the time, the third, we don't have, really have the timeframe for the.
For three.
For three.
You're right, we don't. But I guess I.
And I, cause I'm with you. I mean, I like the three.
Yeah.
But we don't have, but if we gotta have everything in place, July one of twenty twenty.
Yeah.
We don't have it.
Yeah.
And. If it's gonna help us in the long run, the quicker we get paid for, the quicker it comes back off their bill too. We need to a certain extent.
The less it raises.
Again.
In the future. So you, Dan, you're actually talking about doing seventy-five percent, or doing about seventy-five percent on the base. Cause you're saying getting it up to about thirteen. And then you're saying that six ten, you raise it to what?
Eight ten. Oh, eight, eight twenty. Half of the proposals.
So instead of ten thirty-two, it would be eight ten.
That'll be eight, uh, one, eight twenty, uh, make it eight twenty-one, uh, if you need to make the numbers match. Make it 821, if you need to make the numbers match.
75% of 1032 is 774.
I'm not a percentage guy.
So you want to put more on the, on the flow?
The proposed flow increase is $4.22. So if we only do $10, $2.10 now, that's a 50% increase in overall.
No, that's increase.
Of the total.
Total increase.
I get your point.
If you're gonna do that, why don't you do 50% of both of them? Take the 26 to 40, is the 13. And take the 610, 915, that's 50% of both of them. Raise them the same percentage. Happy to choose one of those. Then come back with what number you need for future. I didn't understand that.
I mean, we want, we need to have a method to our math.
I usually, in this situation, I suggest, today we're doing a, you know, 75/25. I'll suggest anywhere from 50, 50% increase to 75% increase, so...
Somewhere in that range right now.
Somewhere in that range right now, so it would be...
50% would get us what?
Well, I was just trying to add a little more to the higher user at this point too, because, I mean, I understand that that is... Also, I think, like Scott, I mean, I, I think the base needs to raise, because, I mean, I think everybody's using it. Taking their fair share too, and that's why. Forty, I don't know, I didn't do the math, forty is close to whatever percent it is.
Dan, when, when you talk about raising the, the flow rate higher, are you looking at having that continue to be higher at the end? Or that the flow rate then match back to whatever's been split into, to this 50/50 number?
Right now, she's, 422 is the proposed 100% flow rate increase.
So you're talking about doing, what was it?
50% of that, which is the 211. Now, and then do the other...
So you can do the next 211, do the other, do the next 211.
So half the increase upfront?
So just half the increase across the board.
Instead of a 75, you're adding?
I was thinking, yeah. I was thinking 75 on the base and 50% on the usage.
But then when you finish, it was...
When we finished, it would still be at 100%.
Right, so you'd still be at that, at the end, you'd still be like, for the 610, you'd be at 10 there. Yeah. So all you're doing is accelerating the high users quicker.
Yeah. I mean, that, that's one way to keep the base rate down a little bit for the fixed income people and then let the base rate people pay a little bit more for using more. I mean, we're, we're in between who needs the sewer plant the worst, but we make, we get more revenue off the higher user than we get off of the base rate.
Right.
In the long run, correct?
With those, what I understood from the numbers.
That's my idea, 40 and 210, 211.
You're taking the base rate to 40, and the usage to what?
To add in 211, it'll be the 821. Then with the number that's left, we can decide that the next time we do the increase, whether or not we want to add, how we want to add it to more base or to more usage. To come up with the...
So that means that you want to raise, you want to raise the, the base rate by $13.42. And you want to raise the, uh, usage, usage rate by $2.11. Uh, the base is $13.42 to get it up to 40 bucks.
So, so you're effectively raising the base by 50%? But you're only raising the usage by a third?
No, by 50%.
50%.
No, you're going from 10 to 800.
Yeah, 50%.
That's 50% of the increase.
See, about 100% of the increase. $40 is...
But, okay, so here and there, if you go to the 20,000 gallon user, the new, the new rate, they're gonna pay $40 for the, the 30,000 gallon, the rest is a 40,000. $40 flat fee. The $20,000 user, or 20,000 gallon user is gonna pay the 40 also, plus an additional 45. So his bill's gonna go up 90 bucks.
What this rate increase, it's, it'd be slightly less than that 75/25. And it would be an acceptable, it would be an acceptable rate increase to get you guys going.
The 40, the $40, bringing it up from 26 to 40 bucks, for the flat rate, within 88% increase of the flat rate. The increase would be 88% of what you need.
88% of what?
What we need.
The gap is 88% of what we need.
88% of what you need on the flat rate.
On the base rate?
Yeah, base rate.
On the base rate.
So you're loading the base rate.
So then these numbers too much? That's okay?
No.
Because we got 1382 here, and we're about $3.75 lower in this rate.
Well...
That might be incorrect, which is more than...
You guys... If, if, if you were to look at just the, the amount of increase that we need, if you accept the, the idea that we need to increase the user impact from 2658 to 4497 at the total amount, $40 would then get you 88% of that base rate.
So you think this is too much of a...
For the base rate now.
Maybe that'd be enough for total base rate.
There's still five dollars under the projected.
I know, the projected is a little high in there.
You gotta be conservative.
I know.
Because the last rate increase could be... If, if, let's, let's say it's a little bit easier, a little bit, that 40 bucks might be all you need. But do you need to do that? Kind of that, not that.
So, what the numbers have, we've looked at a lot of different scenarios, we can look at it a lot of ways. Tonight, putting an initial rate increase in, get you started. There is a little bit of difference of opinion on how much should go on the, the base or the flow. If you put some sort of increase in place tonight, whether, whether that's 50% of what's needed or 75, you can have some further discussions on where you want the rest of that increase on your base or your flow.
50% of the base rate increase added to the existing increase, base rate is 35.78.
That's right.
And 50% of a proposed usage increase to exit $8.21.
$2.11.
You wanna go there? So let's, you wanna go there?
Sure.
Wanna go there for now?
Good to meet you.
Raise the base to 35.78, and raise the usage to $8.21.
What was the, $8 and what?
821.
And the other one was?
35.78.
Am I rounding those? 825 and 36.
Sure, I like even the words.
But percentage. I'll figure it out for you.
I knew he was gonna say that.
I'll figure it out for you.
All right, let's round it to 36 and 8 and 1/4.
Okay.
Are you happy with that?
Oh, man. Yeah.
You okay with that?
I think, I mean, that's a good start, we still got work to do. The real question is, is whether we do the last in two lifts or one, I think we can only do it in one. But what that might mean is, is instead of a year from now, we might talk about it nine months from now.
We can do another one when we start the loan, you know, we can, we can do a portion then, and we can do another portion when the projects finish. When we know our payment, I mean, so we could do three of those.
Do we, do we have to have the number secured for SRF?
They'll want to have that number secured when, when the loan comes in place, they'll want to see that those rates are there.
Are supported for the whole loan.
But if we know, I mean, we'll know then what the whole loan's gonna be, can we show them the steps and the timeframes, we're gonna make the increases? Do we have to actually do it then, or can we just show them that that's our ordinance, is in place to do it then?
We, it's something that we can have to discuss with, they're, they're, I call them all full-time requesting, but it's nothing I can guarantee as, you know, I don't, I don't write their...
I mean, if we have to have it placed again, but if we can do it...
Do it, do it in pre-step.
We can have our plan in place, even though it isn't in effect, but we have the plan. That could be a pre-step, then we can still do a pre-step process.
You know, there's also, you know, if that, that first year, you could have a, could wrap a payment around. There's, there's lots of, you know, if, if your steps aren't quite in place, you could have a lower first year, you're gonna have a higher, the other 19 years are gonna have a higher payment. But there's lots of, lots of things we can look around at for that final step. So it looks like it was proposed, if I'm correct, raise the rates, base rate to 36 and...
Usage rate to 825.
Usage rate 825.
But I'd be rounding that to the year's quarter.
Like, you want me to go, you want to go eight and a half? Do I hear eight?
Nine would be round.
You want to go nine? Do I hear nine?
So you got direction on that, that's really all you needed.
Give me a vote.
Okay, need a motion to prepare the ordinance. Prepare the ordinance.
Don't move.
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
You know, thank you very much for, you know, I, I appreciate a council that takes time to really think through their own options and, and come, and come up with, come up with a solution. It's not, it's not always the funnest thing to look at rate increases, but, uh, uh, thank you so much for...
We usually come to an agreement at some point, takes us a little longer. I appreciate you being here and giving us the information and sitting through our discussion.
Well, like I said, I, I'll leave some business cards here, some comes up, you're looking through the numbers, and have any questions, I'd be happy to discuss anything.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Discuss and give direction for authorization of professional service agreement to take to our dream to perform the topographical and right-of-way survey for the 2019 20 street.
Basically, basically saying there, that's just to do the, the top of survey and everything on those streets, the biggest thing if you want to change anything, this is prior to going to design. It's the biggest thing if you look at the streets on the, I think, next page, topic right. Those are the, so item 11, just make sure that's, that was the top four priority of the streets, if there's any changes, now is we want to change, I guess, would be the real big thing. We're surveying all those streets, starting from design, but then, I guess now the time to change, if you want to change. I'd like to consider taking Madison to Locust instead of Columbia. To...
So we extended, is that extended?
Extending it clear from Washington to Locust.
Well, Madison from Washington to Locust instead of short.
To about four, four blocks. Instead of the Columbia from... Yeah, so we got, we have basically 10 blocks, we're doing, we're gonna survey 12 blocks, we have money for 10, 10 blocks. So I guess... Well, I mean, you could survey it all and come back with a proposal of whether or not you can do...
Just survey additional part of that, you're saying?
Go ahead and survey from, the portion from short to Locust, and decide whether we do the full stretch of Madison instead of part of Madison and part of Columbia.
We were looking at cutting down the Columbia portion already, about two blocks, to fit it under the money that we have right now. So if you took out all Columbia, I don't think you got enough money to make it to Locust anyway.
North Street early though, from Madison to 63...
We're, we're looking at two blocks of North Street right now.
From Madison west.
So you're not going to 63?
Yeah, the 63 doesn't, I live farther that way.
Well, that's giving us the storm sewer.
The problem with.
The street's not bad, really.
Yeah, the problem with, the problem with, with North Street where it's really bad is terrible drainage. You got to fix it.
You got to fix.
Is it that much more do the survey now and then decide after the survey?
Oh, I, we can do that. There's no question about that. The, the point though is, is we, we pretty much.
But once we have the survey and they can put a package together on what can be done.
Is there any other streets since the, all the rain that is needing repair worse than what's on here?
No. I mean, oh, here's one. That's a tough call.
I mean, the, the, what, what Darren's talking about as far as that area on, uh, on Madison, you could probably find other streets that worse. It's just a question of your priority.
But while you're working on that street, are you better off to go ahead and? Why don't I even talk about mobilization? It's just why you got that street tore up? Do you want to go ahead and do it rather than jump into another street?
Well, the only streets that we would be looking at in, in context is a portion of Columbia around the hospital. That portion of Madison around the hospital, two blocks of North Street. Pretty much what we're looking at right now. It's all we got money. Maybe, maybe one block good, but I don't.
Because I haven't even heard back on whether or not they need total replacement or if they can be patched and overlaid.
I, I've talked with Larry about it. It's pretty much total replacement in these cases.
I wouldn't doubt that, but I haven't, we haven't been told.
Yeah, no, he, he, he's indicated to us and he, he was driving over him with me and he goes, I need some patch and overlays, but they're nowhere near the, the condition that these are at. And we're looking at some in the east quarter maybe, but, you know, that's down the road. That's not a priority that you want to establish again.
Not because I live on Crestview, but something's got to be done with that street before school starts, right? Have to cancel school.
Yeah.
That's not, yeah, no, we're, that's, uh, that's.
I would submit.
The church part is abandoned.
I, oh, I would submit that what Darren's talking about is not as bad as where Crest is.
So what I didn't, but.
I mean, it just fell apart in the last two weeks.
You're right. I haven't brought up yet, was the reports, and we would do current disaster planning. So there's potential we could move some of that to the, you know, the, the projects, want to say that's in there, say the washout and all that. So there's some issue. We have some work on that. So that's, that's an issue. But I understand. If it doesn't cost that much more to go ahead and survey these streets, at least you've got the survey done and you don't have to screw around with it later. You've already got the survey done and you can.
Rather have the plans to do it.
Maybe you can pull the trigger.
Yeah.
Right.
Particularly disaster. If they need six numbers, right, you might help out.
So are we okay with, so we're okay with those? You want me to come back with the men, the, the, add, add the other block? So I want to kind of get this site and get it going unless you really want to totally change it. We can get it signed later, but.
Our goal is to try to get the road to change it. We don't have to bring it back.
That's true.
I'm saying change, as long as you change it.
Just to make sure we're clear. I think, well, I guess the thing is we change it where the cost is going to be different. So that, that's improving that cost as we, so basically improving the change with the cost.
I don't know how, I guess we're good after.
The sixteen-seventh, is that the number?
Yeah. We have to ask. Oh, you do approve of that in one, yeah.
That's not very hard.
That's up to the surveyor.
As long as you're in the neighborhood, it looks good.
Surveyor is working pretty cheap. He said this guy needs to work for them, but, uh, he's also going to be surveying the, just so you know, the surveying that entryway to the cemetery, uh, that we're working on doing over the season.
So what would we add into this short to?
Locust.
So Madison Street, instead of Washington to short, Locust to short.
No.
That would be Washington to Locust.
Okay.
All the same, he's got it.
Right, that's just saying, I click on Washington, he's got it.
Everybody agrees to that change. We don't have to wait for.
It's been awesome, but prove, prove the change in the street and approve additional costs for the change.
Yeah, why have to prove? The additional costs that's occurred in that change.
And you could approve this tonight and then in two weeks we'll have the updated cost for those adders. And then you could just approve that too, but at least we'd be getting the surveyor going on things. Because I know North Street, we wanted to let late summer, so if we could get.
So we can approve with the change for the sixteen-seventh and we can approve the additional cost.
Maybe in two weeks.
But they can still be working on it.
Right.
Correct?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the professional services agreement with the change on one-one of Madison Street, Washington Street to Locust instead of short, and approve the additional cost.
We're going to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Booze. Consider approval of resolution approving non-union wages respective July one, two thousand nineteen.
This is a state requirement to get the pay plans for both police and, uh, non-union management. These have already been budgeted. The resolution acknowledges. Thank you.
Thanks.
The public works seasonal, um, in the pool management, pool manager, all of those, um, wages are unchanged. The library not covered by this pay plan, eight plan, uh, is reflected, has a reflective of a two percent increase. This is all ten percent.
So. The number's out to the right of each one. Got the steps they went through to get to top of scale.
That's their pay range, yes.
So then the, the top one. DPW and the community developed. So next year, do they go to the sixty-seven? I don't want.
Yes, they would. Plus whatever call that you put into it.
That's what I have the issue with. Because they're getting three percent already and then you're adding another two percent. So they're actually getting a five percent raise.
Yes, the two percent goes into the base pay plan, just like it does with the HSM contract. HSM does the same thing.
I don't think they should get the additional two percent until they get to the top of scale.
We've had that discussion before.
I know, I haven't changed my, I haven't changed my opinion on it either. I don't like it. For some people getting two percent, some people getting five or six.
Until they get to top of scale, you're right.
Anybody else got any discussion on? I don't. I'd like to see it done like we did the police department. I don't have a problem three percent increase till they get to top of scale, but I don't like the three percent plus two percent.
Dan, is that, I mean, is it, does it have to be that way? Is it a law or anything?
It's a, it's in place right now.
It's a year-to-year pay plan. So you guys change it every year.
I mean, the council could change it to what you want.
The police chief can't be on here. This is to be done through a resolution by itself.
The police chief is on the second page.
The police chief. This to be done through a resolution of his own. Actually, you've approved the police pay plan per se. But the police chief will have to be done through a resolution of the time. That's what the ordinance states.
Okay. I. This would be, this would be a, this would be a resolution right there too. The police, the police chief's pay was subject to the, this development of the police department pay plan.
Anybody got any, any more questions about the pay plan? Got a motion to approve it or not?
Move to approve the pay plan.
Scott?
Yes.
Darren?
No.
Earl?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Discuss and give direction regarding hotel motel funds awarded to D.C. Trails Commission.
Um, shorthand, I forget.
Have we already got it or?
I'm going to hand it out. Take it out of my bag right here. Yeah, of course.
Hey, Dan. Police looking, would you mind if you gave it to Dave?
I don't mind.
She mind?
You have it all, put it all together?
No, no. It's a good thing. I sent, um, to all of your emails, um, what we did was we applied to the ministry. Um, what we did was we applied for Main Street Iowa for a market studies and analysis. It hasn't been done since two thousand and six. And what it does for, for us is it gives, um, uh, very in-depth, very in-depth information about who we are as a community as far as demographics are concerned, how to target marketing for the businesses throughout the community. They do this through surveys, analytics and several different tools. Um, they choose for communities to, um, do this with each year and we were selected. It's about something we did at no cost, it's about a fifteen thousand dollar value. So on June twenty-fifth, we'll have our first meeting, we selected a focus group, project group, I should say, that we work with Main Street Iowa to go through all of this and how that'll help the businesses, um, let them separate several different ways. It'll help them, like I said, with their marketing, where to market, who to market with, who to market to, how to do that. Um, it'll tell us what we, your profitability, sales receipts and all of that. Very in-depth, there's lots of different things and you guys have a copy of it in your emails. Then the second step of that is after, after the studies are done, we go through a training or recruitment team to go solicit new businesses to come to the area and help existing businesses expand. So they'll actually train us how to do that, um, with this left team to go out and, and handle that. They like to have done about every five years, um, so we were, I needed to get it done. So I wanted to let you know that we are selected and that overview of the mock-up, what they're really doing as anybody else.
I can do this from here, I can use that.
Nice.
That's it.
I'll do this, do this on a whiteboard situation.
Are you not going to stay for the rest of it?
As intriguing as it is, I'm sorry.
Can you do that, say that again, I didn't hear it all.
Send you a memo.
Emailing. What's getting better?
I don't know. We have a balance right now of sixty-nine thousand dollars and change in the hotel motel fund. Inclusive of that is a twenty-nine thousand dollar, one hundred and thirty-five dollar one-time payment. Because they owe us. Um, also included in that is the first two payments that we received this year, which is about twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty, if I remember right, is that number right?
We're back to receiving the correct amount.
Yeah, and yeah, that was, that was getting the right number. They, we're receiving, we, we got sixteen thousand and change for one payment, nine thousand, the most recent one, and that was the worst month of three months that we would have, the, the first quarter.
Yeah.
And we had a fund balance of fourteen thousand, about fourteen thousand five hundred. If you add these numbers up, it's gonna be about that number. Okay? Uh, we also have. Why can't I just have it the old-fashioned way? Uh, we have, uh, thirty-three thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand one twenty maybe, or something like that, of awards for this year. Okay? So if you subtract that number, we're down to thirty-six thousand approximately here. And that is the number that we have available to do other things. Now, in this thirty-three thousand is ten thousand dollars. That's DC Trails, uh, was an award to us, or we awarded ten thousand dollars to them this year. But they owe us ten thousand dollars for phase two. So that number can come out of this number to pay us. The issue that's outstanding for all of us is not counting that ten thousand dollars. We still owe on phase two, because we made an additional commitment, we still owe forty thousand dollars. Now, the question is, where do we get the forty thousand dollars? We have to make a transfer that will be brought to you, uh, at the next council meeting to close out the books. And we got it, we can't have any negatives in our books, Eddie, can't do that. It's one thing that we've learned through this process. So the question that's outstanding is, do we use money from this thirty-six thousand dollars that's left over? Now Sandy will remind you that we, uh, always try to collect the money the year in advance to pay for the awards next year. Uh, because we're getting about a hundred and twenty, or rather twenty-five thousand dollars a year, and if we project the same amount, we will have fifty thousand dollars to award next year. Do you wanna do that? If you do, then the point is, is that we wouldn't have very much money. Cause if you had another twenty-five thousand dollars here, what you get is sixty-one thousand dollars. Although fifty of it. Would only leave you eleven thousand dollars left to go against the forty thousand dollars that we gotta come up with. If we were to come up, we have to come up with this money. Hotel motel is, is an obvious choice. If you're going to use, utilize this, then we would come up with, the, the suggestion would be is, is that we come up with thirty of the forty out of hotel motel, if you wanna do that. Uh, coming out of this balance right here. And if that be the case, um, if we took thirty out of this, we would have about the same amount of money as, with a projection of the awards for this year, about same amount of money as, as this, what we awarded in the current year. Uh, thirty-one thousand and change, probably about an eighteen, seventeen hundred dollar difference. So do you want to spend thirty thousand dollars out of here and recognize that you're gonna be somewhere between, I mean, twenty-five thousand is a conservative asset, it could be thirty, thirty-five thousand. But do you wanna spend the same amount next year on hotel motel and utilize thirty thousand of the forty thousand we need at hotel motel, or you want us to go find it someplace else, which stands for the probability of utilities? We don't have it in the general fund. The general fund, we, we can't get a, a handle, because it changes dramatically from day to day when you pay out. We're fifty-seven thousand dollars going in today, but all the claims that you're gonna approve, we'll drop that down to, into the negative territory, but we'll still get revenues coming, uh, later this month, but the general fund is gonna have to take some sort of a transfer to get it all balanced. And it really isn't the, an issue of expenditures, it's really an issue of revenues.
Seems like a logical place, but eh? Thinking about doing something like ball fields though, I mean, do we? Take it all out of there?
Do whatever you set that aside.
The ball fields, eh?
Oh, the basketball, are you talking basketball or ball field?
We, we stopped the ball fields to put it in the basketball. That's what happened.
You found extra money. You found extra money to put it towards the basketball, right?
We took it from the baseball field.
I thought you said you found extra money and didn't know what.
Yeah, that was it. That was, that was really.
Cause you wasn't gonna build much of a ball field for what you gave.
I'm sorry?
You wasn't gonna build much of a ball field for what you gave for the basketball.
No, no, we, it was a, it was a collect the money process. If we were going to do ball fields after we've done all these other things, we would have to take money out of utilities, that's why. When we were talking about doing ball fields, I was suggesting that we probably do somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred thousand dollars a year for five years, so that we didn't have to jazz up our, our budget too much. I don't think that the school would carry that, but that was the ideal for us to afford.
I'd like to look into building a ball field off of that, I don't even worry about a school.
Okay, well, that being said.
I mean, all that goes to, I mean, all that relates to this, cause this money can be used for that too.
But we still have, we still owe forty thousand bucks. This year.
Like in the next two weeks.
We're doing, we're doing the transfer resolution at the next, at the next council meeting, and we, somewhere, gonna show actually fifty thousand, we're gonna show ten from the, from the DC Trails that they owe us to go into this, but the other, the other money, we have to, forty is on us.
You just approved a raise, you should have plenty of money.
I'm sorry?
Just approved a raise, so you should have plenty of money. Well, it may be different fund, but.
We budgeted, we budgeted all those raises.
How much do we normally carry over, anybody said that?
Um, we're looking at about fourteen thousand utilities this year.
And now you'd be looking at six thousand.
You took thirty, yeah, but that assumes twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue and I think the next. The last two quarters that we're gonna receive money would be for actually the spring and the summer paid in the in the summer and, or the fall and. Yeah, the summer and.
Well, your best goal is last, theoretically, that's right. October or whatever, December, cause there's, that's your best.
You also get a lot of folks in the summertime.
Yeah, but I mean, that's, you got two good quarters and you got two.
We, we did, we did, we did sixteen thousand in, in our first quarter, which was, you know, the last quarter of what you're talking about, deer hunting, no, sixteen thousand. I think it's reasonable to assume that you could do thirty thousand, thirty-five thousand.
Well, there's, there's other construction in the area, there's a lot of.
Which is where you got a lot of the summertime highlight. But the real question here is, is like, if, if, you know.
If you take twenty from here, can you find twenty?
It's gonna come out of utility, whatever we do. Because it's not gonna come out of the general fund, and quite frankly.
It's gonna come out of utility.
But, I mean, we'll look at some other sources, but generally speaking, whatever we do is gonna come probably out of electric utilities, not just any utility, it's gonna come out of electric.
But same way, if you, if you decide to do something with ball fields later, you don't take care of it.
You go out of the left end, you just won't. I just, money you got set aside for such a thing now.
Ball field's gonna, when you talk golf field, you're talking about trooping the existing one at Lake Fisher or building a second one?
Building a second one in that Lake Fisher.
Probably three hundred?
Hundred and seventy-five.
Just, just, uh. Deal benefits.
Okay, I mean, might look at some lighting, but I mean, I, I think it's something I'd like to see is talk to you sort of agree about, I mean, that guy was here at that last meeting, I mean, he said a basic ball field's around a hundred and seventy-five.
Before you light it?
Oh, yeah. Cause that. I don't know about that.
Well, when we were talking to school lighting ones, what, seventy-five thousand?
You can't.
Okay, I'm, that's what I got, this is the information I got. So you wanna take thirty out of here?
I mean. Thirty out there and ten out of the left.
And, and I can tell you right now that there'll be other transfers, we, we have four accounts that are negative. Um, one is like three thousand. That's electric power, we just haven't done the transfer. Um, there's one for, um.
The energy efficiency, and I received work today from Brad that the payment is here, but I haven't seen the theater bank account, so.
So that should wipe that.
I don't know if they'll wipe it out.
Yeah.
It'll be close, because there've been some expenditures since we asked for it.
So we have those two, we have DC Trails, and then whatever happens with the general fund. And the general fund, oh my goodness.
Today was positive, we've been watching it.
It goes up and down all the time. But this one we know, this one's fixed, that one doesn't change, and we gotta clear this out. We made the commitment. When we made the commitment, we didn't identify funding source. So when we do the transfer resolution, we'll pull thirty out and effectively award DC Trails ten thousand to give us back ten dollars. Okay? You feel comfortable just doing this, or you wanna take a voice vote on that?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, tell me again what you're doing.
We're gonna take thirty for the city's portion. And then we're gonna get DC Trails ten thousand that we would give to them this year, they're gonna get that. And we already have talked to them about doing that.
They get a few grants, I think they've got all of base three already more than covered.
And that's with none of our money.
I just opened the letter from French Reniker, which is the bid proposal and everything for phase three, so. Alan Yang's name on it, he's the chair, I don't know.
They're the ones that.
He just signed for our record, I think they've got it all covered this year.
Okay, discuss noise ordinance. You should all have a copy, a printed copy of what I've come up with, I looked at several, um, ordinances and tried to find one that most closely matched what I heard you talking about last time, and also the one that seemed to cover what you wanted, but was not overly complex. Some of these things get twenty, thirty pages long on noise ordinances. Key things I want you to look at, uh, if you go into thirty-nine oh four, four A, talks about where the measurement happens. Um, really the only difference is that we talked about it right away, this talks about when you're, happens when you're in a public space, or if someone makes a complaint, you can enter their property with their permission and measure from their boundary. Um, if you go on over to the levels, um, the level that you had talked about was, um, I believe a nighttime level of seventy and not a distinct level at during the day. Those are, those are much higher than most communities are. Um, and so I, I'm happy to change them, but I haven't heard what Ames is doing. Um, with the hours that you recommended, if you want me to do that, this is just for review right now, this isn't, you know, we'll bring this back for public hearing next time, once I know for sure what you, what numbers you want in there. Um, and they, they also did different levels for different zones, right? So that in an industrial park, you might allow more noise than in the neighborhood. Um, if you go on down, it's also, uh, permits so that you can grant exceptions for rag bribe or for street festivals or whatever.
Area nation.
Area nation, right, and when you get down to, when you start looking at permits, there's the amount of permitted, amount of sound permitted is based on how loud it is and how long, because sound has a cumulative effect on your, these begin to get into, uh, approaching dangerous levels, right? Certain level, decibel levels for an extended time begin to have cause problems. And so that's why you see at one decibel level, you get twenty-four hours, and as you go louder, it gets less and less. And then, uh, exceptions, if you read through that, you know, basics, emergency vehicles, those kinds of things, but also construction, um, football games at the stadium, those sorts of things, so. Really what I'm looking for is anything you'd like me to change in here. Um, and like I said, next time we'll, we'll do a public hearing and do the first greetings with any recommended changes from you.
Fireworks displays needs an organized. I, it's like. Like the fire department does want it to, can I get a permit to have a fireworks display in my yard?
These, um, so these are ones that have been granted by the city, right? So if we grant that permit, then yes. But if we don't grant you that permit, then no. So if we grant that permit, then yes, but if we don't grant you that permit, then no.
But I mean, that's part of the way you're talking about permits, if I wanna have a fireworks display, I can get a permit to do it?
And we have to grant it to you, right?
Yeah. If you ask for one.
Does it cost anybody?
We don't, haven't here a fee for the permit application, no, just like we don't for a free permit. We do have, um, oh, the other thing I want to point out, the fines, so I, I didn't hear anything in the tape about exactly what we want to provide. So there's, the way Ames does it, I think is pretty cool, fifty bucks for the first violation, a hundred bucks for each repeat violation. And by the way, it goes to whoever's in charge, whoever is occupying the property. But if you got somebody that keeps being a problem, you can change it from a municipal infraction to a simple misdemeanor and so they can, you know, a little more.
Do we need to put sports to lie in exceptions, so we don't have to have?
Well, we've got an ordinance that allows you to shoot, to do it certain days, there's what, two or three times a year.
State has.
But then we, so if you're within them timeframe, you don't need a permit either, right?
Well, I mean, I, you would ask, I would ask, you know, that question, but I mean, to me, since it's approved by the city already to be able to do that, right, that's the way this reads.
July or third, fourth and Christmas and New Years?
Thirty-nine oh eight says, doesn't apply to activities of temporary duration permitted by law and public to license or permit has been granted by the city.
So if we've got an ordinance to stage, you can shoot off certain days of the year, then?
That I don't know would be covered, I think your firefighters shooting off at the, where do you breathe, it's covered.
But our fireworks ordinance has July, what is it, third and fourth?
No, it's.
I think it's a little longer.
And it's like, is it Christmas and New Years?
Yeah, like Christmas, New Years.
So this overrides that?
I don't know.
I think so.
I would think so.
I just thought maybe you wanna go ahead and put in an exception for the fourth to live period until ten o'clock or?
So to be municipal infraction.
Eleven o'clock.
What was the one we did the other night, we talked about?
So that's a civil, that was a general civil penalty, right, when we do a civil citation. This just gives a schedule to this particular thing, so like, kinda like when they do a police, it's still here.
No. So you got simple misdemeanor, do you want simple misdemeanor in there or do you want civil penalty?
No. Again, this is not my area.
It's got both in there, so you can go down a simple misdemeanor path if you want to.
If they keep, if they keep of, of having offenses, they're, they're in the fifth, sixth, you can change it to make it more stiff.
I know, but can the, can the city, can you do the simple misdemeanor?
Not the way this reads.
Well, then how many need to put the civil penalty thing in there so that the city can do it?
Oh, no, it's there, it's, the police can do simple misdemeanor or he can ram up for that civil penalty.
That, that's what that says?
Yeah.
It just doesn't physically say it?
Yeah.
And I just want to make, I haven't sent this over to their office yet, I wanna get, get it.
I read it.
Thank you.
I can't find the fireworks thing, it looks like.
It's all about.
I, and I, I like the idea of reaction and use a meter, so it's not subjective. And it gives.
People know it.
Gives certain violators a chance that they could actually muffle, muffler somehow and get below a level and still enjoy what they're gonna do.
It's hard to make everybody happy, but I think this is the best way to go about trying. Everybody like it?
That, that's the only thing I would suggest, uh, July third, fourth and fifth, you extend it to eleven o'clock.
I think that's already done in the fireworks, she's looking that up so we can go, she, we got anything else, we can come back to that.
Uh, with, with your permission, we'll work that out and then bring it back to you for the public hearing.
Discuss parking and stop sign changes.
It's on your packet too, put one through four on there, uh, I did receive a call a couple of times about no parking on east side of Washington Street. I don't know if we hashed that out earlier last year, so I just, I had to bring it to your attention, so I don't know if you wanna change that or not, but I know we're there. What do you mean, we, we put the no parking on there, but it's on the west side.
You wanna exclude it, right?
No, you're on, we moved it, we put no parking on the, the west side, but we had a call, one on the other side and one on the east side, so. I just, so this is brought back up after we made the change, so I just had to bring it back to your attention.
I think we started off time on this thing.
Yeah, I know, so I just wanted.
Um, I think some of our signs, instead of saying no parking anytime, need to say no parking this side or something.
Okay.
I mean, you go through a lot of towns, you know, and you go down the streets, it'll say no parking this side.
Okay.
If there's a garage sale, they ignore them anyway.
And, uh.
I know, I had to dodge three at the beginning.
So three stop signs, uh, or three intersections, Poplar Elm, Locust Elm and then Bloomfield and Locust. There's no stop signs on those streets and so I guess which way you wanna, you wanna stop the traffic on Elm? And stop the traffic on Bloomfield that are crossing the, those are the north sides, north south streets.
We should have a couple thoroughfares that go close to the hospital, through town, one or two directions with no stop signs, basically for emergency vehicles.
Can we look at those and get back to you?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, I know West Street's one, but that's over. I mean Madison. But if you look in a lot of towns, we'll have a couple of streets one way that no stop signs and a couple the other direction. May it for thoroughfares, mainly for emergency vehicles to get back and forth through without, nobody stops anyhow.
Good. And of course you have to update parking out front here, the disabled parking and the no parking zone, drop, drop off, it's out there. And then, uh, no parking changed the north side of Locust, next to the library here.
I'd like to see that, no parking at all.
On both sides?
Or through the week, Monday through, like Monday through Friday.
Daytime?
Five to eight or five to nine or something.
Oh, you can still park the evening and weekends.
There's no parking on that street, clear from the swimming pool, clear to here on both sides.
I thought we put the parking going down the hill after we passed Black for Dennis office, Charlie's place down there, everybody raising their fingers, all that stuff. driveway there behind the dentist office on.
You mean like from Keys to the high school on the south side?
Uh, I was getting on the backside. He's great, but no parking there is what was doing, was people getting tangled up doing it now that parking law, backside. The long building, it's got the dentist and the hair shop and all that stuff. But I don't know what we're working on a lot of time, but I don't remember what we did.
So what these all need to be reviewed for the next week.
Okay, I'll send them to you later, it's an email, so you'll have it. Or send your packet, but if you wanna.
Another one I'd like to look at is the stop, the temporary stop sign that the school puts out on Booker Street in front of the school. If there's certain hours, that's to be put out or they can have it out all the time.
Okay.
As long as we're talking about these, Brian asked me about changing the parking behind Keys.
Where semis coming in at on?
I think where he was wanting is the, the block to the east of Keys on the south side of the street is, I think these trucks pull up there and then back into the loading dock and never have any issues if there's cars.
That's street.
No, focus.
I, I would assume just the one block or even half the block.
Well, because the kid that parks a little white pickup going the wrong direction right across from the street that goes between Keys and where the tail leg of the park. When the semis pull up there and have to wait, you go get through that street. But there's a little white truck since they're going the wrong direction parked right at the end of that street all the time.
Anyway, he asked me about it, so if that, add that to the.
That's a police issue.
There's, yeah, I was gonna say there's some, the calls that were receiving, kinda like the east side of East Street, that the calls, really it's that, this is a police issue, because it's parking behind driveways within twenty-five feet of the driveway and all that, so really if it was just monitored by the police on some of that stuff, even parking the wrong direction. I mean, you know, that stuff would fix some of that stuff, so I guess.
Off the Sean.
Just some little traffic enforcement.
Cause it only took them two weeks to park like your white line and ball field.
Signs went up today, there's just more signs up.
Did you do any, do we need to change in ordinance or any, anything with what we did down there?
No, I mean, it's already in our ordinances, I think it's ninety-six oh six, talks about no parking between the lot line and the curb anyway and, and you're not supposed to park there. So, and we just put up signs, no parking in grass, it's the same, you know, or just kinda spelling out.
Going down the hill, like by the basketball courts, is that no, I mean, is that?
Already no parking, it's already.
That's already no parking? If we wanted to put yield pedestrian signs up for the, where people are supposed to cross the crosswalk, do we have to change?
That's a state law, yield pedestrians, I mean, so, uh, I can look, we need to adopt that.
Do we need to change anything to do that or do we need to put signs up or is everybody getting that or?
The signs are going, the signs are going up, so.
The yield pedestrian.
So.
Need to put photo and four star too.
Put camera.
You don't need a camera. Just put the sign up.
I'll just add it to my list of pictures taken.
Yeah.
Chris gets that.
Be a quick run into the truck.
All right, I'll get that.
You run out of paper yet or?
Nope.
Anybody got any other areas?
You see, so there's even, there used to be way on.
Like this. And, and there, I think there was a stop sign there.
Okay. You wanna?
Okay. Let me look at it, there didn't used to be.
There didn't used to be here.
I don't think there still is, unless something got tore up recently, but not a stop sign there.
Discuss and give direction regarding change orders and invoices for the pool deck project.
We have a request for payment, um, that's already been submitted, uh, that's beyond my expenditure for about eight thousand dollars. Like one above the, the bid price. Uh, if you approve this, then, uh, we'll be able to cut the check and, um, make payment to D L A tomorrow.
This was for additional work?
Yeah, we went over and looked at some of it and where it's been cut, there were places just this far from where they were that needed replaced. And I thought surely, you know, in talking with, with Gary and Danny, we thought those places ought to be fixed, because you're not, you're gonna be fixing them six months from now anyway and try to hold that off and then the lights that they were putting in, you might as well put in LEDs instead of putting those others in, so those are some of the changes and so.
The city bought the lights, didn't they?
I.
Personally.
Yeah.
Parts the wreck bought.
The.
They ordered the lights and got the lights and then.
Sent the others back.
And then then.
So and then they recruited in.
The conduit was in the base of the cement, so when they ripped the cement out, they ripped a lot of the conduit and the grounding out. So that's where ninety percent of this electrical comes in, is from half of the fix what was ripped out of there.
And that's one of those things that happens, so we all want that.
We should have put it in the sand when we put it in.
I make a motion to pay it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Discuss and give direction regarding adjustment of start date for East Street culvert project.
Okay, I originally put this on there because, you know, the, our change order one stated that the culvert would start on June, uh, thirty-third, of course, it hasn't started there. So, uh, the, but we come up, had a meeting today, contractor, I know Donnie's here, um, uh, long story short, there were some design errors made, of course, with the sanitary and the gas and utilities, so we're back, kinda the square one we wanna do is either, the options is to move the utilities, uh, about forty feet to the east. So it costs about fifty-three thousand dollars to do that for the sanitary sewer, uh, gas, of course, we, you know, suck that up as we do anyway. And, uh, uh, and then, or the other option is to have the pipe run through the culvert and, uh, I can show you what that look like basically. But, uh, system of culvert, culvert bottom, so basically the pipe runs through, let's say about right here, about a foot off, so they would build up, uh, concrete thing, two, two foot of inches and go down like this, so your water flow that comes in here has to get up and go over the hump, make it over and come out of the culvert. So basically you're kinda, you're gonna form a little bit of.
That was after they wanted to shorten the box from the ten inches to a nine inch.
Yeah, so, yeah, instead of being ten foot tall.
Then put almost three foot impediment in the floor.
So you're gonna have six inches, six foot clearance here.
We're just gonna backwater up and make a nice mosquito pond.
Right.
I didn't know water run uphill.
Yeah.
It does when it gets deep enough.
Do those rains like we have, so, um, so that's the option, that's one option, like I said, the option's moving. One, one thing I know, we was talking with, uh, contractor today and, and they can talk about that, but it's also maybe the district culvert, put a bridge in instead of culvert.
We put a lot of bridges in Davis, Waplo and Van Buren counties, we call them Benton County bridges. Basically they're, they've started in Benton County, they're a steel back wall bridge and you set ten inch H beams, depending on the size, span, size of your spanning, on two foot centers, you fasten the outside ones together and you lay plywood in the bottom and you fill them full of concrete. And you can drive off, the whole eagle loads and those are usually at forty, fifty feet. This, the, the bridge that's in there only spans twelve and a half foot and I've never seen it flood. The other night when we got four inches in four hours, it was one of the few things that wasn't flooded. And we could go thirty foot and probably have no deflection in the deck and be considerably cheaper than even the box and we can do pretty much anything you want with the wings and miss all of the utilities.
Do we need to change that to benefit anything with the sewer treatment plan as far as?
No, it actually, if we go to move that, um, sanitary sewer, we're probably gonna, it's gonna create issues, because it's just, uh, the placement, we gotta basically move it, you know, back and bring it back and, because it goes into this station that's over there.
You said you already, would have had issues with the water line.
Cause we moved the water line for the, for, cause we hit it, remember, so we had to move it, well now we're gonna probably have to get across that water line again and we had some issues with the D N R, it's gotta be within ten feet, with all that, so we could get into some other issues moving that, that sanitary by the water again.
So if we change and go to a bridge, what's the timeframe we're looking at? We gonna be done with it before school starts?
Three to six months. Month, five to six weeks?
Yeah. School starts, what, twenty-seven? School starts, what, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth August?
Yep. If, if we move, move the, move utilities or this, we're not, it's not gonna be done this year.
You'd have to wait to design the, the sewer move. Let it do it.
I'm saying if we leave everything alone and we don't do a box and we put a bridge in, how long's that gonna take to get designed and all that?
Just depends on how technical you want to be about it. I mean, we, we build them all the time.
Brian usually goes. County usually goes out and pulls up one he's done before.
Calvin and Burns usually drag, uh, designs them or we, we build them off of Calvin and Burns designs. They're called beam and slab bridges.
There's several around you can go look at.
Not that I think that this is an appropriate solution. It sounds like a real good one. But Gaila, do they have, do we have to rebid this because of the change of structures here?
It would seem like that would probably be something we'd have to do.
There is one issue.
Yeah.
We already have rerod in form for this box that we had an order when we were gonna start in April. And the other day they called and they'd been babysitting it long enough, he said.
Is that something they could use in this new construction?
No.
There's no rerod in.
But this bridge would be.
This was just something we kind of threw up.
Considerably cheaper than. Oh, I'm not, geez, I'm, 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 I, I think it's a great solution. I, I just, I'm looking at it from a standpoint of whether we have to rebid this only from legal standpoint. I wish we didn't, but can't think we probably do.
Change order.
But it falls under value engineering or not, but, uh, yeah.
See, that's, that's a problem. We can't. I mean, probably second, can't value engineer.
I realize, and we don't have an issue with.
Yeah, no, I.
Our only thing is the rerod we have.
How much is it, Dan? I have to.
I'd have to look. I don't remember how much rerod, how many pounds there was.
Is it something we can sell to the people doing the tree?
Well, it's prefab for a box, Benton County.
Oh, is it?
Uh, there'd be what? Maximum fifty thousand pounds or?
I think there's probably forty, forty thousand pounds or?
Fifty cents a pound?
Less than fifty cents a pound.
Twenty thousand dollars.
So two hundred plus twenty.
Whoa, you mean.
What was it? Down the bridge was two thirty?
Box was two thirty.
Two thirty.
About a push.
Without the, without the.
Bridge fences, yeah. Estimate?
No, right offhand, I'd have to, I don't know what steel price is doing it. I can get, I can get a I could work up a price on it and get kind of an estimate.
Uh, you're gonna say if, if we move the utility, you're saving sixty thousand.
Right. Well, yeah, they, they were, uh, the estimate was to change this box height to nine, drop it a foot and then move it a forty. So basically costing fifty thousand, fifty-three thousand to move the utility. It's, they're saying it'd be better washed by reducing the size of the box.
I don't think they would.
But that's, that was their, but he, uh.
Now it's their architect that's over construction.
The only.
Yeah.
Several times.
It's their fix.
It's in their contract.
I think a wheel fell off the wagon. I want to make sure we get it right when we do, but it sure has been a.
I mean, you, just like if you, what with a bridge, do you have to go through a designer or?
Got to have it some sort of a spec.
It's a county.
That from liability standpoint, I'm guessing that you want to have some money for the air.
I mean, there's a spec on.
Yeah.
I mean, we can get some from the county engineer, probably.
That's a pretty tough.
Yes.
We're floating into.
Yeah, Dr. Ryan.
And we can make them any width you want, length up to.
Well.
Up to forty, fifty feet, which you don't need, doesn't it?
What it sounds like to me is, is go to the county, get their spec and see if there's any adjustments that we have. We'll probably take this HRG as opposed to.
Yeah, I mean.
We need to cut, cut bait down another one. This has always been a problem. So I don't know, we could probably get him, if the spec isn't tricky, we could probably get back to, and hire somebody.
Have approval, go to bids.
Thirty days for bidding.
August.
Yeah, I'd shorten that up to fifteen days if we wanted.
You can do a local letting, post it in the paper and do it in two weeks.
I, I don't know about the legality of that. I'm just asking.
Well, that's what the county's doing.
Okay.
Around here all the time.
So we could probably be back in business first of September.
No. Eight seven thousand, they can hire it.
Probably need thirty days.
That's, that's another thing.
First, first.
If, if the city were to buy the materials, you can hire it done.
Well, I don't, I don't know what their.
Yeah.
What the hell?
Might be a little different.
I would want to look into that.
Yeah.
Well, let's just say that we, we can bid it in August or not bid it in August.
July.
Bid it in July, get it awarded in August. It won't be done before school, but. We talked about the school before and now all they were gonna do is go down to the highway and.
There're just four buses that use that cut through.
Yeah, and they, they were gonna go down.
That's terrible.
Bad.
Terrible highway too.
Every school bus is like nine hundred and some cars.
Yep, school bus, yeah.
So there's nothing to, I guess, to talk about on there, to book on there, but just need to, just kind of let you know what we're at on that.
Well, I, I mean, I guess, I guess we do, I guess. We need to decide whether we want to go to bridge or not. We need to decide what we're gonna do.
Right, yeah.
So there is something, there is a decision that needs to be made. That, do you want to do the box with the hump? Do you want to move the utility or you want to go back out to bid for a bridge? We need to check on that.
Do you want to make a check on, look at the kind of bridge that we're, uh, telling you about and?
Well, and, and the the agenda item is just starting issues.
Alright, so yeah.
Well, push that off indefinitely.
It says discuss and give direction. I mean, you can give direction as to which way you want to go.
It's no starter.
He needs to check on that, that, um, beam and slab bridge is normally gravel. So we did, you know, need to check on the additional pavement, if we're gonna pave.
County usually puts angle iron on the sides and then holds gravel on. But there's nothing that says they can't be dry service because it's steel, concrete, all of it.
But one side will obviously be concrete, so. One side is already concrete.
No.
No, the, the bridge itself.
Oh, okay.
The deck itself. That's why we'd like.
Beam.
We'd like for you to kind of look at one of these supportive, you know.
Well, you want to kill off the culver that's, and, and come back with alternatives for consideration? Or do you want?
So I need a motion to stop this project. Stop the culver project.
As design.
And come up with another alternative.
That would hurt.
So moved.
What would you like to do about the rerod?
Uh, we'll negotiate.
Yeah, negotiate.
Dr. Attorney.
Second to that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Keep some of steam, yeah. Consider approval utility pole purchase from Powerline Supply in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars.
That's our annual pole purchase. Seven places the poles we use throughout the years. So this is, this is a routine, uh, thing and buys, that's one truckload. We buy them one truckload at a time for cost prices. We currently are out of the, the size that we're buying right now. So we only have one size in stock, thanks to forty-fives. We end up usually most in forties. We have a five foot off. So this is just an annual order. We have the money, so.
I think we just spent it. A trail.
Yeah, uh, oh, yeah, we got, we touched on them. We're okay in that area.
Move to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Consider approval housing incentive plan for parcel zero one, zero one, two nine, seven oh.
Which one is which?
I, we're talking about.
John Hilber?
Yeah.
Six oh two car. This is in five oh one West South Street that there's a new house.
Boy, is that brush pile looking nice out there now.
So just on all three of these, just so you know, they've been reviewed for what, by me and Simon and Gary as well. So our recommendation is to approve them.
We, pretty soon approve them one at a time or?
Well, they're on here one at a time, but.
Look at them. We can look at all of them and make a motion and include all and.
Well, I have some questions about five three seven two. One zero zero five three seven two. You know, he doesn't list a contractor. Um, and the individual, I've never known him to build a house himself. Is he just trying to lock money up or? I thought that's one of the things we didn't know. He's got so many days to start, right?
Yeah, he, well, there's, uh, once he gets building permit, he has to start within ninety days. He has twelve months to finish it. And, um, I'm not certain. I know he's looking at contractor options and one of the options is, um, I mean, he still needs a contractor to do this, but he's looking at, one option is the, um, manufactured, not like, but a, you know, modular home.
Yeah, okay, alright, that's.
So he's looking to kind of use thousand.
Power.
About.
Sixty-six.
Yeah.
That, I know.
Stafford style home.
Mm-hmm, that's one of the options he's looking at. I don't know that he's certain that's the way he's gonna go. I know he's also talked to a contractor as well.
One at a time or?
Where's the wall? The one, is this on that corner next to his existing house?
Where they tore the house down?
Where they tore the house down?
No, I think this is on, um, it's on Grant.
It's Chestnut.
It's that one, no, that, that's his address. The project address is Grant. It's that house that's been coming down for now a couple of years. The lots, yeah, the lot's clean.
Three, so it's right here.
Mine says three oh three. I think somebody scribbled on it two or three times.
That's his address.
Three oh four Chestnut, three oh four West Grant. There's already a house.
That's it.
Or did it tear down?
Came down.
It's, that's the, that's not the one he tore down.
That's the one that came down over time, right? I have the right.
West.
My understanding. Yeah, right. So he lives. Lives there. Yeah, that's, that house is gone. Even though it shows on beacon, it's gone. So, okay, that's just, it's an empty lot.
So motion to approve new business items, J, K and L.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve or pose?
Consider approval of renewal of class C liquor license for Sunday sales for slicks, please.
We'll go approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose.
Aye.
Do you need voices over that, Sandy?
Probably should.
Okay. Roll call.
Scott?
Yes.
Earl?
No.
Jack? Darren?
Yes.
Consider approval of renewal of class B beer permit with Sunday sales for Jay's one stop.
Second.
Darren?
Yes.
Earl?
No.
Jack?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Claims.
You're numbered out. I know I seen Brenda with her book out. She better stay away from it.
What?
So assuming the Danley one has all three of these added together?
Yes.
Any questions on the claims? The MPA, the maintenance contract, is that, it wasn't that for our website or something?
There's a small piece of it that's, that's been for the website. We, we need to review that whole thing. Um, it's mostly for, um, computers, keeping the computers running.
But are they just on an on-call basis?
So they, they, there's so much, I don't remember the specifics of the contract right now, but they do a, they do so much maintaining computers and then there's on top of it, there's an hourly rate that is less than their regular commercial rate that, that we use, that we're charged for above and beyond what's under the maintenance contract.
But I mean, that, is that a, how many years is the contract for?
Well, that's what I'm saying. We need to review it. It, it's one of those reviews or recurs annually and let until we.
But if it's over twenty-five thousand or whatever, we have to do a resolution for it and we haven't done it.
It could be.
Right. Because it's twenty-eight hundred and some dollars a month. That's about thirty some thousand.
So we need to do, like I said, we need to review it.
Might take a look at that or look at it and see what's. Because if we're doing our own website now or whatever, we don't need to pay them to do it.
I assume most of this is maintenance.
Anybody got any questions about claims? Got a motion to approve it?
We'll go approve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Prove. Public comments? Reports, Gary?
Just that, what you did tonight was 51% on both sides, um, as far as the rate increase, sir. And I just have a question, do you want us to bring this back right away or do you want to marinate on this a little bit? As far as making some adjustments, let coming up.
On the sewer rate adjustment, let's get her down.
Get her down. Okay. I'll talk with Heidi, I don't know whether she'd be ready in two weeks, but certainly if not, two weeks, it'll be four weeks. We get, we'll do plenty of marinating. Yeah, we have to go.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Danny?
Uh, sure, I'm just, Cole Wellman, our new lineman, started Monday, June 3rd. His apprenticeship officially started, uh, June 6th. He, uh, since he graduated old school in Sheldon, he automatically has a, a 1,200 hours towards his, uh, apprenticeship programs, basically, which also allows him to set for the test for year one of his apprenticeship. So, he's gonna be scheduled to go up and set for the test to qualify to be complete for the year one. So, he, until he gets done with that and talks about what he can do, what he can't do. So, he's, uh, jumped right in there, he's real, uh, uh, just hard charger going good. So, him and Dave is really, uh, getting a lot of things done here this last week. DOT painting, I know you guys asked about that, about the thing, I've talked, went out to DOT and talked to those guys out there. They're getting ready to do some, uh, slurry, center line stuff, they're gonna be doing, the paint crews coming through, they got it scheduled. So, they're, we're gonna add that in when they come through and they come by. So, uh, they're aware of it and just working with them when they get in, so. Attended Clayton Energy, uh, Gas Annual Conference, uh, the end of May. And so, I guess the good news, uh, the gas prepaid plan that we've been working on for the last nine months, actually will take effect August 1st. We'll receive a 35% or 35 cent per MCF gas discount from August 1st for the next seven years. So, and ours take it as 30 cents, so we have to have five cent, uh, commission fees and all that good stuff. So, 30, 30 cents per MCF, uh, discount on the, the gas we purchase, uh, for the next seven years, starting August 1st, so. Water and DNR, water had a DNR inspection this past week, uh, no, no false downs, they did a good job, uh, prepping all the documentation, getting ready for that, so annual inspection. The water, CDPG, uh, starts Monday, Lawson will be in town. We'll be doing a tie-in on Northland Drive, uh, there for that and so there'll be some water off for a couple of hours on that section over by Northland Drive. So, we'll post, uh, uh, things Monday and let them know that there'll be outwater on Tuesday for a couple of hours. Uh, Streets have been working on Madison Street, I know you've seen some of that down there. Gas had operator qualification for Fusion this week, so again, more skills getting Trent, uh, ready, uh, to be on-call and getting his qualifications up. So, they, I and you come down and did the training right here at Columbia Shop. We mowed 416 North Washington Street, so that's the first street, uh, or first street, first house in two years. We've actually been noticed, so we're sending out notices, Kristin's out notices, our individuals mowed them. And I know last year you talked about, we had to mow it last year, but last year you wanted to make sure it was done nice and whatever. So, if you want to take a drive by 416 Northwest Street and just make sure it meets your, your approval, uh, uh, everything. Farm lease, the farm lease, I've been working with, uh, uh, John Weber and, uh, asking to get it done. I know I've got a lot of calls on it, so hopefully he's gonna get it done because next week I'm gonna head and put it in the newspaper to, uh, have the farm leases due, uh, that come in. So, uh, we got, we got it posted, at least we can slack somebody to get it going, because I know the first cutting is already now, they need to be getting in there. So, uh, other than that, but, a subset of questions, so I have.
You're putting it out to bid?
Correct.
When?
So, it'll come out Tuesday, next Tuesday's paper, we'll put them on. Probably just do it for a week and get it out, we'll slack somebody at the next council meeting, select, select bids and then, um.
Where are you getting, where do you, you picking up at the city to bid on it or?
Yeah, we'll put, uh, specs and everything in there for, for where to do it. Yeah, City Hall, we just seal them up, seal bid, put it in. So, it's more than just what just happened across from Hopkins Place, we do there and the other side of the lake, a little higher on there and then backside of the dam, so.
Danny, what's the plans for that section that we get closed off on West North Street? Is that gonna be closed off forever?
Right, no, so, West North Street, what I'm working on right now, so we'll, we'll be, uh, so we're right, so you guys understand, we're kind of in the middle of fiscal year, right? So, we're right at the end, so we're trying to close it out the month and they, we're, we're, we're not gonna stop operations, but we don't wanna, you know, go over unless we have to. It's kind of like emergencies, things you have to do, things you don't have to do. So, really, so really, first of July, what I want to do is I'll rent another Bobcat and brush, rush it all off, get it all cleaned back up, where it is, try to get, you know, everything down. Then we'll go back through and we'll, uh, patch it real good and get it, so, and then we'll get it back open back up. That'll get us hopefully through the fall to, uh, then get us hopefully in construction. So, that's the plan. So, we've kind of doing something different on, on the ceiling, talking to Larry, come down and, and we worked through there. So, what we're really doing is we're, uh, one thing we may increase is doing the heat plants, is what we've not been doing yet. But basically, uh, real, make sure the holes are really painted out and then also, uh, uh, shield, basically seal coat down the hole, fill in with the UPM mix, seal coat back over the top and, and chip seal and rock and get that there, so basically trying to, because the big thing with the patch, you gotta keep the water out of the patch, you gotta keep it sealed and get the water out. So, we're trying to really keep that out. And we should hopefully are through most of the dry spring.
Hopefully not soon season, though.
Right, so we should be a little better, so that's our plan, so. And I've talked to some homeowners on that area, so they kind of know that too, so, uh, yeah, we're just kind of getting there. This, so first of July, we're definitely getting on that too.
If, if this, if this project gets a little tricky, we'll find it out, aren't we, too? We've got some business.
Two things from the flood the other night. The pipe over there by, across from Rick Warren's DM was sticking straight up in the air and water was crossing the road.
Okay.
Something needs done there.
That's not ours, so that's private property. Belongs to that, sorry, uh, well, Priesters, right?
Priesters, that's, Priesters lot.
Priesters Corner.
You need to notify them. And he's left.
Yep.
Right, well, his overflow's gonna tear our street up. And the fire department would, I don't know what the status is on our radio communication from our employees, the fire department. But when the fire department was out helping block streets off, they really need to be able to communicate better.
Correct, because they're all digital now, so.
Yeah, Jeff's not here, but he did say something about they were gonna have some radio coming out of service that they could at least be able to communicate, so might touch base with Jeff. And there was zero water standing anywhere on the square. In four inches in four hours. Hour and a half. Okay.
Okay, that was my point.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, through the sewer plant, we, we passed 10 million gallons in four days. And then we normally pass 300,000 a day, so we passed 33 days of water, four days. So, and a lot of people are calling, a lot of people had, you know, water coming up from the stools and basically stuff like that, and it basically just kind of passed them on to, to sump pumps. I mean, that's, that's that extra water that sump pumps are, that's, that's killing our, uh.
Buckeye and Jefferson.
Buckeye, that is what?
The alley.
Oh, we went down and looked at that.
Where all the rock horses down the sidewalk.
So, yeah, so that's gonna take some, yeah, so, talking about, uh, climbing down the sidewalk right here, right, yeah. So, yeah, we're gonna have to, we'll have to hear that, figure out what we're gonna do there, do that drop, that alley.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I just wanted to make sure that we got on your list of things.
Chris, um, you approved three applications, we're gonna have three more for you at the next meeting on the housing incentive. So, we got, we guys pledged funding for about 10, so just keep me updated on where we are in the process. See, uh, today Teresa Stedleman from HRG came down and we talked about sponsored projects. So, when we take out this SRF loan, we're gonna have about 20% of that payment will be in, the, over the life of the loan, about 20% is interest. And there's, they have what's called a sponsored project, they'll only let you take 10% of cost of the loan. So, a portion of your interest that you can put back into a water quality improvement project. And so, basically, you're paying that money one way or the other, it's whether you can get it back to do some water quality projects or not. So, we were looking at potential options, um, the, we drove around square, or drove around town, looked at all kinds of different things. And we're looking at everything from, you've got, uh, you know, all the buildings around the square, they shed the water to the alleyways. So, there's some way that we can either do permeable paving and before, I know you're not a permeable paving fan, but let me just preface it. But you can't do traditional INI, you can't do traditional storm sewer project. So, this money can only go towards what they call water quality improvement projects, with permeable paving is one. You could do, um, bio swales, or, you know, they've got a list of different things you can use. But we looked at just the, the different projects we looked at is, could we do something with alleyways, could we do something? Maybe down by the school area where you've got parking lots that are draining off into the pond. So, another type of thing that they've had people do, so Danny mentioned sump pumps, it could be a kind of deal where you cost share with homeowners and say, get your sump pumps pumping out to your yard and we'll work with you to do some sort of bio swale in your yard. I mean, it doesn't have to be on public property, it can be on private property, but you have to have an arrangement in place with the property owner. So, anyway, it could be a way to incentivize sump pump stuff. The process of applying for this, it's pretty short. We don't have to decide exactly what we want to do, we just have to talk through the possibilities on the application. Next, at the next council meeting, I'll bring forward a, an agreement from HRG to consider that it would be a $13,700 to apply for this, uh, to go through the application. They've had 100% success rate to date when they've done it. Uh, if we do a 6.5 million dollar loan, so you're looking at about a $650,000 essentially grant that comes back to, to do these projects. So, she, we would do, if you approve the app, the, the agreement to do the application, then we had a conference call last week in June. We'll work through the different scenarios, present those scenarios to the funding agency with, um, a, a full application by September 3rd, so. I, if you think about, if, if you're thinking through some of this, if you consider, are you more interested in incentivizing homeowners? Are you more interested in addressing the building runoff on that in the alleyways or, you know? You could do a Lake Fisher project that talks about how do you improve the water quality at Lake Fisher so that it, it improve it for recreation? I mean, there's different options that you could think about. You have a short term, short term opportunity to go to, to get, we don't have to have a nerve down, but we have to know what you might be interested in.
Right.
We can make the decision about what we do.
We need to have to move the landfill to a better area so it don't pollute the water.
I asked her about that and she said, well, with, you, my landfill, I, you need to treat it out. And it's already, it, it, it's not considered an impairment on the water. The kind of things that she would talk about would, in terms of out at Lake Fisher is, um, there might be some stream bank stuff that we could do, um, some upland practices. So, we'd be going out on the, you know, to the south of Lake Fisher and, and working with landowners there and saying, can we do things that would improve runoff quality erosion control?
Build berm hoes?
I didn't hear, sir.
Build berm hoes?
Yeah.
There you go.
Sounds like we need to get sump pumps out of the sanitary sewer.
I like we need to have a pool in the center of every block and everybody run their pumps.
Well, you can't, so, you can't do traditional INI, right? So, you can't use this to, um, to reroute the water, but you can use it to say, if you're gonna put, if you put your sump pump out, we can help you deal with the water on your property in a way that, rather than creating a swampy yard, maybe you get a, I don't know, small wetland feature, I don't know.
Red tile in the street.
Can't do that, that's what I'm saying, you can't do those types of things.
I mean, this doesn't pay for that.
Correct. This won't pay for traditional hard infrastructure.
So, you could put pavers on the sidewalk at the end of that alley and catch that water so it don't run down the sidewalk.
So, she said what they're, what they're recommending in towns, yeah, but she said, pave the alley, don't pave the sidewalk. pave the alley behind the buildings, or with the permeable pavers and then use that for catch basin, it'll slow the water down, um, and clean it before it gets out to, to traditional storm sewer. She said it's a lot of, well, you know, I said, what if we, not, not, I don't want to think I'm trying to bring back streetscape, I'm not. I said, what if we went to the sidewalks on the front and just, you know, we're trying to figure out how do we do something up there? She said, well, all water drains to the back and additionally, the sidewalks are a really expensive place to, because of the limited space, it's a really expensive place to do permeable paving in just the sidewalk, quite so.
Is it a match grant?
Nope.
It's just a grant.
And there is an opportunity at the same time to apply, if you've been accepted as a sponsored project, you can apply for a CDPG water quality grant as well that doesn't require a match and has an open application, so that can be another 600,000 we could put towards the project. So, when you start, and, and neither one require a match. So, when you start looking at it, you know, you throw, take out your design fees, you might have enough bucks to throw towards something. And it doesn't have to be one, like you could, you could do an alleyway demonstration and you could do something a little bit on at Lake Fisher and you, you know, it could be a bunch of little projects. It doesn't have to be just one project.
Does it have to be the entire alley?
Might be a possibility.
Does it have to be the entire alleyway or could it be stripped down the center into your permeable?
Yeah, I mean, that might work.
I'm concerned about digging that close to the old building.
Yeah, so they've done it, um, they did it, designed it in Mount Pleasant, I haven't been in Mount Pleasant, see how theirs worked in the alleyway.
I didn't look at the alley, I looked at the sidewalks around the square.
And I don't think those were permeable, they considered it there, but the cost was too high.
Uh, not the entire sidewalk, there was a strip in the sidewalk, I believe it was.
That was permeable?
I didn't like how they did their sidewalks. At first it sounded like a good idea, but, no, I didn't care much for it.
But you, I don't know if you get over that way, but you might check their alleys next time you are. But, yeah, I mean, she wasn't saying, only way to do this is do the whole alleyway, she was just saying that's an option. I didn't know whether you could slope your alley to the center and put a four-foot strip of permeable down the center and catch the water. So, one thing she did say, um, is it, so anytime you put in the permeable pavers, you have to have an impermeable layer underneath. And that, having more space to get in there and do that reduces your overall cost, right? When you have, one of the things that she said on the front of the building, when you're looking at the sidewalks is that when the width of the sidewalk is just not sufficient to really get in there, excavate and do that. It, it just brings your cost per square foot up a lot compared to, she said like it'd be cheaper to do the alleyways than it would do the sidewalks, just because of the amount of space. Even though it's more total surface area that you can get in there and do the work, it's, it's easier. I, we have those conversations.
Our sidewalks kiss as wide as our alleys.
True. Too close, yeah, but you're also dealing with storefronts too, same, the same issues that we were talking about before years ago, where you gotta figure out how to keep them open and that brings costs up. You usually don't have those concerns anyhow.
Quarter of them, you don't need to worry about keeping them.
There's that. I guess that's all I have right now.
Council updates? I hear comments.
It was then, did they after the last council meeting, review opening statements?
Oh, yeah. I did, went in and did bank statements and found it very interesting, so I did my month, which one of you guys is doing this month?
I went out on flood patrol.
Did they come in?
Uh, the week of the next council meeting, ideally it would be great if we could do them before the council meeting. And it might be even if we come a little early with the council meeting and look through them. Earl and I spent, we got it done in less than an hour, but we, I felt like we did a thorough, thorough.
I asked a lot of questions.
It was, it was interesting, wasn't it, Earl? It was, it was interesting, wasn't it, Earl?
It was.
I'll do January, February, March.
Keep that in record.
Scott, Jack, you're in for.
I'm hardly home for two hours in the summertime. I'm not gonna go down there.
But I think we can do it in definitely less than an hour and you can spend as much time or work through it as you wish.
Mayor comments? Well, I had some. Oh, the building's on the square. We got anything on them or is there any? Do we need to start?
We need to.
Is there something we can talk about or ideas to do something with them or somehow get rid of that fence? Can we do?
We need to get somebody to give it temporarily stabilized. So again, if you have people you recommend that could do that work and look at it, please hand us your name, hand us some names.
So is that where we're at now, getting estimates on temporarily stabilized?
Yeah, we've talked, you know, we have talked to a couple, uh, people that were thought about being interested in purchasing and doing something with them, but that's not yet. Yeah, that's where we are, temporary stabilization.
Do we know, do we remember who did some work on which is the lead?
He, yeah, he gave me a name, but he didn't give me contact number and it was, he said the last, I mean, it wasn't helpful. Last name was Yoder. So, you know, that's.
Easy to find a Yoder. Very easy. Do they do the stabilization or they just do the work?
Well, I believe on his, what they did was they tore it, took down the whole front. And then, um, and then built it back up. I don't know if they did, I don't, it's different work from what I understand. He didn't have the same issue that these people are having.
I don't think I have anything else. Close session.
That room is available if you want it so that we can clean this up, but it's up to you.